Good evening. We will be conducting tonight's meeting in person in City Hall Council chambers as well as virtually using Zoom. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting tonight on Wave Channel 18 and online through the city's YouTube channel. If you would like to participate in live public comment via the Zoom platform, please refer to the agenda for instructions. Pastor Scott Stewart from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints will be giving the invocation this evening, and Mayor Joyner will begin the meeting after the invocation.
Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful for this opportunity to gather here at the City Council meeting. We're so thankful for those that serve faithfully in our community. We recognize the many time, all the time and effort that goes into these public offices, and we're just express our gratitude and ask for thy blessings to be upon those that serve here in our community and throughout the county. We're thankful for the the community we live in, for the people, the families that are located here. We're mindful of the wonderful children and youth that we have in our community, and we pray for their well-being, especially to keep them safe from harm in our schools and in other areas that they go about their daily activities. We petition thy blessings to be upon those who are serving in the armed forces, as well as those that are first responders here locally. We're so thankful for them and ask for thy blessings to be upon them. We express our gratitude for the wonderful opportunities that we have to associate one with another. We recognize that sometimes we have differences of opinion. We ask for thy mercy to be upon us as we interact, that we can do so in a civil manner and be able to focus on the good of our community. But tonight, Father, we express our gratitude unto thee and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, I have 6:01, so I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Leslie Roll Call, please.
Councilmember Andriata.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Carlsson.
Here.
Councilmember Lawrenceon.
Here.
And Mayor Paul Joyner.
Here.
Item three, report from closed session. We have nothing to report from closed session tonight?
Mayor, I'm sorry, can I interrupt you really quickly? Gwen, we're having reports of people not being able to get on Zoom. Have, is there any issues that you know of? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
Thanks for keeping an eye on that. I've got a lot to watch here. We'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Huber, would you lead us, please? All right, we move on to agenda modifications. Dan, I think you had a requested modification?
Yes, I would like to move, change places with 10C. I'm sorry, let me get down here. 10B and 10C, move 10C up, 10B down, but to accommodate our finance director who is on the road.
Trying to avoid getting snowed in.
Yes.
All right. Anyone have an issue with that? Any other agenda modifications from council or staff? Seeing none. We'll move on to presentations. We do have a proclamation 2023-01 declaring April 23rd as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month and recognizing kids first for their efforts in prevention of child abuse. Councilmember Andriata, you sit on the Board of Kids First. Would you like to introduce your new?
I would love to. Yes, thank you. I am the president of the Board of Kids First, and we spent many months in search of a new CEO, and I would like to introduce Debbie Gabelitch, and she started a few months ago, and she's doing a wonderful job. And so, where's, you can come up to the mic?
Yes.
That'd be great.
Boy, we've rearranged everything here, haven't we? So I'm gonna go ahead and read this from here, if that's all right. We'll get approval of it, and then I'll bring it over to you. All right. So proclamation reads, proclamation of the City of Lincoln, of the City Council of the City of Lincoln, declaring April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. Whereas in 2020, Placer County investigated 3,227 reports of child abuse and neglect affecting an average of two children per household, and whereas adults and caregivers have a responsibility as neighbors, community members, and citizens of the community to help create healthy, safe, and nurturing environments for children and youth, and whereas safe and healthy childhoods help produce confident and successful adults, and whereas child abuse and neglect often occurs when people find themselves in isolated or stressful situations, and the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable when our communities are supportive, active, and engaged, and whereas effective prevention programs succeed because of meaningful connections and partnerships created between agencies, schools, faith-based organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, and Placer County's collaborative is among the most effective in the country. And whereas over 30 years, for over 30 years, Kids First Counseling and Family Resource Center has functioned as a child abuse prevention council for Placer County with two locations strategically located in Lincoln and Auburn to serve western and southern Placer County, and whereas wearing a blue ribbon, wearing the blue ribbon on April 1st and displaying a pinwheel garden, a pinwheel in the garden in April will serve as a positive reminder that together we can treat and prevent child abuse and neglect and keep children safe. Now therefore, be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Lincoln does hereby proclaim April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month and urges all citizens to join Kids First and its engaged partners as they support each family's efforts to keep themselves and their children safe, healthy, and in nurturing environment. If I could have a motion on this, please?
I move that we accept this proclamation for child abuse prevention month.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This month, or in April, we will be celebrating and spreading awareness for child abuse prevention. If you guys want to visit our website, there's all the details on there. That's kidsfirstnow.org. But in the meantime, I'll share a little bit of what we're doing. We will be planting pinwheels with our community partners. So on April 11th, we're doing it with Children's System of Care going out to the sea or the building on Sunset, and then we will be doing one at the Auburn Courthouse this Thursday. The idea of the pinwheel is the symbol of prevention. So we go out and we plant it, and that spreads awareness. We are also going to be doing two trainings throughout the month for prevention and also how to become a protective factor in our community, and then social media campaigns. So please check out our website and see what you can do to help. During this month, any ideas of how you could spread awareness is really important to our community, because as mentioned, we love doing this work. We've been here a long time. We're gonna be here a long time, but it's all about the community helping us. So thank you very much.
That's wonderful. Thank you. It's incredible work that you all do. Thank you. With that, we move on to public comment on non-agenda items. This is an opportunity for anyone wishing to speak on an item not on our agenda tonight. To do so, see my cards. All right, I think we can start with Don Veltrey.
Thank you.
You bet.
Appreciate this time. Just wanted to give another update from our community over by the post office off of Gateway Drive and the homelessness. Just a reminder that this has been being worked on for five years, that I've been trying to work with the city and work with the police department and with the city attorney, who once again, I love Christine. We started in 2018 until today. I know there's been budgets, there's been changes, there's been changes in leadership, but what hasn't changed is the homeless situation. It actually is getting worse, especially right where I live. I know now we have a code enforcement officer, Kimberly. We have a specific police officer, two, thank you, from the LPD. Jeremy has been working with that also. I have been calling multiple times to the Lincoln Police Department, and they have responded, but of course, sometimes things are so quickly that they can't get to them. If I see someone there, I call, and by the time they get there, the person is gone. So I know that there's limitations on that. But I do want to give a kudos to, once again, Christine. I had sent her a video on March 14th about cars that were literally driving into the ravine that aren't supposed to be there, and I kid you not, the next day, she emailed me with Public Works Scott Boynton, March 15th, the next day, and they had built a fence right where I had showed them that it was. Unfortunately, there was a five-foot area that there's not a fence, and guess what? Motorcycles are going down there, people are going down there. They're still leaving a mess. On February 17th, there was a 72-hour notice put up about having their areas to 10 by 10s. Here we are six weeks later, and it's still not there, per se, meaning it is bigger than 10 by 10s. I've spoken with Ms. Kimberly about it, and she said they're supposed to have a little bit less each time they go down there, but there wasn't a time limit. And now there's actually more homeless down there. There's about 15 camps down there. There was fences along the city line area on Gateway Drive that were broken. They've been broken for nine months, and I've reported it to the city about once every two months, just to remind them. And on that same day, March 15th, they came and fixed it, but unfortunately, I think it's because of the persistence of the homeless. There was two sections that are side by side that were broken. They fixed one section and made the other section keep open and look pretty. So it's like a welcome mat. There's two sections of that still there. I've personally worked with Heart of Folsom. I don't know if you're aware of Heart of Folsom. It's called Heart of Folsom because it's Homeless Assistance Resource Team. I've volunteered with them for two years, and what it is, it's a shelter for the homeless and its community. Churches had volunteered their auditorium areas, a different one each week, each night, and we had churches also volunteer some of the sleeping bags and things like that. I've spoken to Mona Bass about it to see if she could look into that about getting here in Lincoln. So I just wanted to share that and hope that we can have people support Ms. Christine and myself. Thank you.
Thank you. When that tone was out of sync with the time clock? Okay, all right. The next card I have, and I'm not sure if this is meant for for this item, is Marcia Schnapp. Do you wish to speak on an item not on the agenda, Marcia?
No, we're on the agenda or not. I'll speak now.
Okay.
My name is Marcia Schnapp. I'm part of the volunteer group, Friends of the Lincoln Crossing Nature Preserve. And what was interesting at the last meeting, when the mayor tried to get the city council to assure us that the nature preserve would not be the site of the sports disc golf venue, and could not get any sort of movement on that. As a result of that, we put together a position paper. We put an executive summary up front. It's about five or six pages, but behind it are all the foundational documents and the 2003 operations and management document. The 2003 was the amended and updated version that we got from the Army Corps of Engineers. Evidently, the city doesn't have the updated version, at least not from the FOIA request, or certainly that Parks and Recs were using. So we thought it would be useful for everybody in the council to see exactly why the nature preserve has protected status. In the 1993 letter from the Army Corps of Engineers to the developer, they stated deed restriction shall be recorded maintaining the preservation and mitigation areas as wetland preserve and wildlife habitat in perpetuity. Copies of the proposed deed restriction language shall be provided at Corps of Engineers for approval. This is in 1993. And then basically that those had to be recorded as title, which you can get at the county, and those titles basically say that restrictions concerning the nature preserve, the Clarence shall not engage in any of the following restricted activities: leveling, grading, landscaping, or otherwise altering the existing topography, that there shall be, there shall not be placement of any new structures within the preserve. There shall be building, no new building of any roads. And in addition, there are basically any and all other uses which may adversely affect the preserve. This is a legal document. Successors and assigns are bound. The provision of this declaration shall be binding upon future owners. So again, this is, this is a legally protected preserve. You can't just willy-nilly cite this in the preserve. What we are hoping is that, as you read through this, that you realize that the preserve actually has some benefits, and we've given, who've we spoken with, some of the environmental agencies and plant societies, that there are state grant funds available that the city can apply for that can spend money in the preserve so that the city doesn't have to. We would really like that, because then our tax dollars can be used elsewhere. Part of the requirement was that a landscape and lighting district had to be established by the developer, forwarded, signed off by the city, and in that landscape and lighting district, those monies for the Lincoln Crossing residents were to be used for the operation and management and maintenance of the wildlife habitats within the preserve. So I just wanted to let you know, if you haven't seen it, should be in your inbox.
It's in our boxes, yes. Thank you so much for that.
Happy reading.
Thank you. All right, just so that I'm clear, I've got a number, Sean, that want to talk about girls' softball potential. Do we want to do that now? Do you want to hold that for the evaluation on Parks and Rec? How would you like to go about that?
You know, the last item on the agenda is a kind of, sort of like a buffet of items, because really, all of them are things we're working on, and so they certainly could wait to that item, but if it's just...
They're here, so why don't I go ahead and have...
Probably better.
Yeah. So, Amy Hamilton.
Hello. Thank you so much for having me. I appreciate your time, council members. First of all, my name is Amy Hamilton. I'm the president of Lincoln Girls Softball Association. Just kind of wanted to bring it up. I'm sure you guys already know this, because you've heard complaints via Facebook and a bunch of other things. But we, as Lincoln Girls Softball, has basically reached our highest numbers that we've ever had. But unfortunately, we've been working really hard with Doug at the city. There's only so much to go around. We split our time with Lincoln Little League, which is another phenomenal group that helps boys, and some girls are involved with that as well. And we're just kind of looking for alternatives and different ways we can help. Basically, continue to, especially during rainy season, which this season, I know, is an exception to most years, but we're having families leave Lincoln to go to Roseville, Rockland, to try to find alternative places to practice. And it's just sad to me, as a leader, seeing the tax dollars and all that go to other cities. So I was just trying to look for a solution, and so I know you guys are gonna talk to Gary a little bit later, but we just want, you know, the people to stay here, get developed here, and stay for the long haul, stay through, you know, our high school seasons and all that sort of thing to build, you know, future leaders of Lincoln through strong sports programs. So that's all. I'm just appreciate your time and, you know, kind of thoughtfulness toward this, and if you have any questions for me, I'm all ears. So thank you very much.
Speaking of Gary.
Good evening. I had some extra time, because I was actually supposed to, I was supposed to practice tonight, but I had some extra time, because I can't get on the field. Wanted to come out, and this isn't necessarily pitching, because I know Sean has been at our back, side by side, and he's trying to work with us as fast as possible, but what I'm, what I'm approaching here is that it's not just Sean. What I'm approaching you as the council, because you're the council members, to take responsibility for this and assist where you can with them. I know, you know, Councilman Lawrenceon actually has reached out to us twice, trying to assist us with different opportunities to get the funding, to get folks to come in and talk to us about helping out the fundraising as well. But this is about me asking you, staring at me as I'm talking, for you to take responsibility for the community, for you to step in with Sean, to you step in with us and assist us. It's not just Sean's case. You folks actually carry part of this community. You, you rule them. They, they brought you in as a public official. So what I'm asking you, for you to do, is step up and figure out how you can help. You know, not just, this just isn't sitting on a laurels, because my name's Gary, and it ain't Laurel, and I don't want you to sit on it. So I'm just asking you to step up. Find out how you can help us. These girls and these boys are suffering right now. I've had five practices, and we've been there for a month and a half, and they pay fees to come in. So do we refund them back their money? Because they don't get to practice? Because they don't get to learn the fundamentals? I mean, that's not fair to them. So what I'm asking you is to step up. Bill, thanks for your help.
Thank you, Gary. Fair question, Sean, with respect to them not being able to get on the fields. Is that something that we take a look at and partial refunds on that? Do we not?
Well, Gary, I'm guessing that the reason is the weather today, right? The reason is the weather today, not a, not a logjam at the field. Okay. Yeah, so we obviously try to work with any of the groups, you know, whether conspires against us, but you know, his greater point is really about compaction on the fields and just not having enough, and that's really the bottom line.
All right, Abby Lund.
Okay. Hi, everybody. My name is Abby Lund. I grew up in Lincoln, went to Lincoln Schools, Gems in Lincoln High School, and I taught history and government and economics at Lincoln High School. I am still a cross-country coach and a softball coach there of the varsity team. I'm here today to discuss the potential airport hangar space that could be available to us to use for Lincoln Athletics. As someone who grew up in Lincoln playing sports here and attending Gems in Lincoln High School, I can attest the lack of adequate space or adequate sports facilities available to Lincoln youth athletics. Many families have had to face the difficult decision of participating in Lincoln sports or going elsewhere, like Rockland or Roseville, which is exactly what my family had to do to find teams and facilities that had what I needed to continue to grow in my sport. I don't want that to be the case for the future of Lincoln Girls Softball, especially, you know, it being a women's sport, and it typically doesn't get the attention or the money that it needs. This access to quality fields and facilities is essential for building successful programs in our city and keeping athletes here. As the high school coach, you can understand how important that is for me and the future of my program. All that being said, we have an unusually rainy winter this year, which is highlighting our need for access to these indoor facilities. We have several teams at the high school, outdoor teams, who are in season, who are trying to make it work on these rainy days. It is really difficult with our limited gym space, weight room space. I mean, on top of that, it all being outdated, it's really difficult to get quality practice time in on these days. So we're making it work. Today we were in the gym with the lacrosse team, which is a new additional team for Lincoln High School this year. This is their first season, but they are also an outdoor sport that has to make it work on days like this. Sorry. With all that being said, I would like to request that Lincoln Athletics have access to the unused airport hangar space, so we can continue to build and strengthen our programs and keep our kids here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. Melanie, you didn't say what you want to talk about, but I'm gonna guess it's the tentative map item, or did you want to speak now?
Good evening, council members. Melanie Borchardt here. I'm first going to speak about the four of you who made the decision last week to approve the denial of the appeal of the decision of the Planning Commission regarding Deer Crossing. You chose money and power over the daily livelihoods and welfare of our children. You've got other issues here regarding the welfare of our children, a disc golf course, indoor baseball. You've got other issues here regarding the welfare of our children, a disc golf course, indoor baseball. You continue to choose developers' money and stamp everything that comes through the city with disregard for our children. Shame on you. This needs to stop. You approved a decision that was pushed through our city. Here's the application that came through in 2001 in April. They checked, they're going to put a gas station on Deer Crossing. They checked, no, this will not change scenic views or vistas from existing residential areas. This is page five of their application, number 22. They checked, there will be no change in dust, ash, smoke, fumes, or odors in the vicinity when there is a gas station going on this property. That's number 25 on page five. They checked number 27, no substantial change in existing noise or vibration levels in the vicinity. For a lot where there is going to be a gas station adjacent to a school and church facility. This stunk from the beginning. You also have approved something that has gone through our city using municipal code that is discriminatory and biased. Municipal code 18.32.1110 requires the developer to submit information on public facilities, including schools. This does not include private schooling and therefore those children are, are discriminated against. These, this is a protected class of kids under title seven of the Civil Rights Act, Act of 64. And our municipal code has discriminated against them. You can see in what the, the planning department was submitted to the planning commission, the pictures of the lot next to Deer Crossing. When this was submitted on behalf of the developer for Deer Crossing. It's a lovely sunny day. There's no cars in the parking lot. There's no school parking back here on the property where the school is located on the church property. There's no cars parked back there. It's a lovely day. Looks like a normal church. No sign of a school. There's a picture here where there's a sign of the school right here. But is that sign included in the photo that was submitted to the planning commission and our design review board and our planning department? No. Because it wasn't required to per our municipal code. Here are photos that I took the other day. Clearly this school sign has been here for years and it was not included in any of the developers' application at all. This is discrimination against the children here in our city and shame on you for not fixing this.
All right. Thank you, Melanie. That's the last card I have. Is there anyone else in our audience that wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda today? Leslie, anyone online?
We have Fran Neves.
Fran, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, hi. Well, that was interesting. Um, I just, I just um, called. Because um, last time you listened to all my list of interests and I wanted to thank you for all the answers that I got. And I wanted to say how hard I know you all work. I noticed one of those consent items had 127 pages to the one consent item. And I'd also like to say it's really nice seeing you all around town, especially Sean. He and Holly were at the women's club today and he was telling us a lot about what's going on in the city. And actually mentioned that we might get that signal light on 193 and Oak Tree Lane, maybe this summer or this fall. So that was very interesting to me and that it was a million dollars. So I just really don't have a lot to say tonight. I did look at the agenda and later the parks of recreation comes up. But since somebody else already brought that up, I, I would like to see you publish that uh, Parks and Recreation Facilities, the project list in the paper and show everyone what the parks recreation has coming, what's funded. And the fact that they're exploring another alternative space for the disc golf. I think the whole community will be happy to see that. So hopefully the reporter is there tonight and maybe she'll um, do that if it's okay to do that. So again, thank you all for all that you do for the city. I know it's not easy and uh, we do appreciate it. I don't know what you can do about that application. I have seen a lot of things happen in the city where somebody comes in, the development is already, already there. Everything's there. It's like, it's just, the city just puts a stamp of approval on it. People have to move. I remember when people lived on Oak Tree Lane and they were unhappy that they were going to have to leave there. You know, I mean, there's just so much going on. It's like, I liked what Holly said last time about telling people what you're doing. Instead of waiting 13 days before the planning commission, you know, it comes up and then they just approve it. So thank you for your time and thank you for all you do. And I look forward to see you elsewhere in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. Anyone else online, Leslie?
No.
Last chance for anyone in the room. If not, we'll move on to our consent calendar. Any member of the council wishing to pull an item for tonight? Any member of the public wishing the council to pull an item for discussion? Anyone online, Leslie?
No.
All right. With that, I will accept a motion on the entirety of the consent agenda.
I'm moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Leslie, roll call please.
Okay. Councilmember Andrade.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlsson.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrenceon.
Yes.
And Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Move on to public hearings. Item nine A. Conduct a public hearing and to adopt resolution 2023 dash zero five three approving the Ferrari Pavilion tentative parcel map extension. Who's going to handle this for us today?
That'll be Mel, our planning manager.
All right. This item was continued from our last meeting.
All right. Good evening, Mel Palbelinas. On behalf of staff, I'm here to present an excitement to this agenda, which is the continuation of the time extension to the Ferrari Pavilion Commercial Tentative Parcel Map Time Extension. Subbrief PowerPoint presentation summarizing what your council has been provided already. On the 15th of February, the planning commission recommended for approval of the time extension to the approve Ferrari Pavilion Commercial Tentative Parcel Map. The applicant for the project is Fager Design Group as well as ARM, ARM Properties LLC. The request that was approved by the planning commission is for a total of four additional years. That would then extend the current life of the map to January 8th, 2027, if approved by our, by your council. Brief overview of the location of the map. The property is in red outline here, northeast corner intersection of Ferrari Ranch Road and Lincoln Boulevard. It is within the Sun City Lincoln Hills General Development Plan area. And it was just part of the 12 bridges specific plan. It is its own community commercial and has a line is designation of commercial as well. Shown here is approved tentative parcel map. It's 12 acres in size. It was, it's approved for nine parcels out of that 12 acres to be divided. The parcel range from about point six, point six four acres in size to about a little, a little bit lower than two acres. To date, there's no development has occurred and no file map, which is the goal of the, of the project is to record a file map. In the, eventually to be developed individually commercially. Staff has analyzed this, uh, this time extension of the approved tentative map. It remains consistent with the general plan subdivision and zoning regulations, the Sun City Hills General Development Plan standards. As well as certified environmental impact report that was adopted or certified for the revised 12 bridges specific plan. The condition of approval as approved originally for the map will remain applicable. And then there's about close to 100 conditions, I believe, uh, that would, that would reapply to this map. And the four additional years would then extend the map to January 8th, 2027, if approved by your council. As detailed in the staff report, staff recommends the following, that the council consider this, um, this item before public hearing. The findings and information provided here, uh, considered here in this, today's agenda. Dimming and adopt the resolution to deem, uh, the project to be consistent with the environmental impact report for the revised 12 bridges specific plan, per sequel section 15162. And approve uh, the, for four time, time years extension of the approved Ferrari Pavilion Commercial Tentative Parcel Map. That's all that I have for tonight. And if you have any questions, um, staff will be here to respond to them as best as we can.
All right. I'll hold my questions. Go ahead and go to council. Anyone have questions?
I, I do have a question. Mel, when this came before us several years ago, there was a plan for specific tenants in the stores that were approved. There was a grocery outlet, a goodwill, a daycare, a bunch of other things. I'm trying to get a, a straight answer on, do you know if those have expired? And right now they don't know who the tenants are when they move forward with this project. Is that correct? So all of those proposed from before are no longer on the table?
No, the original applications for the design review and CP have expired. They have since reapplied and both applications are now in process. Of course, that's separate from the, what's being considered tonight.
Yeah.
The applicants, if he wishes to, to disclose those, those tenants, they can do so. We can ask that question again with them. Um, I believe some of them are the same tenants, but I can defer that to the applicant for more.
I'd really like to know who the, who they are. Yeah.
Which is great, but it really has nothing to do with the item that's in front of.
I understand that.
Any other questions?
No.
Any other questions from council? So Mel, I'm curious about a couple of things. This is the last extension that we would allow.
Yes, they had received a two-year extension a couple of years ago approved by our council. That's since been consumed, of course, and then they have four more years. So this will be the last four years on that they can get.
And so we have a new owner.
There's a brand new owner and that's ARM. It's the same engineer, which is the applicant representing the owner, but it's a different owner altogether.
So you said, um, developed individually. And obviously the tentative map shows all these individual parcels. Do we know, um, and I might turn to the applicant for this, is the intent to get the approvals, sell the individual lots and have the individual owners of those lots build? Tony's net is going very frantically no. So, so the entire project would come up as a whole, correct? All right. But I think that's all I have right now. Council has nothing else. We left the public hearing open last time, so I'll go ahead and, and uh, leave it open for anyone wishing to testify on this item. Tony, you're free. Yeah.
Good evening, Tony Frazier with Frazier Design Group. On behalf of our Sido, he's, who's the owner is here. He drove a few hours in the rain to be with us. I'd like to start by thanking staff, Mel and Don and the rest of staff that worked with us on this application. As you know, there's a history and the site been, you know, I was involved in it when we graded the web. Ferrari Ranch, it's been over 20 years. I was much younger and looking better. Less gray hair. But here we are with a new owner, as it was mentioned earlier. The goal is to get this extension, although it's for four years, we still hoping to break ground this year. So we are working with staff on the design review application. So we can hopefully get the designer view approved and move forward to improve plans and construction. We already have final map submitted for review based on this, based on the prior approval as well. So the goal is to really start from where we left off. There's a lot of history on this, a lot of approval, a lot of uh, plans been done. And hopefully we can get that moving forward so we can get the approval very quickly. So we don't lose another year. We are working with different tenants. Some are the same, hopefully. I mean, right now they're still working with design review. We still don't have approval. So we can guarantee anything. But some of the tenants have changed. Some are still the same. So he's, you know, and I'm more can speak about that in a little more detail for you. But right now I don't believe everything is 100% solid until we get designer view. But we are working with staff. We submitted the application. We got comments. We need to continue addressing those. So hopefully become in front of designer view. And today is again, is approval for the map itself, irrelevant what's on it. But I think we can share with you some names if that's important. Hopefully it's not, it doesn't prevent us from moving forward. We appreciate your approval tonight and hopefully we can continue working. This is important commercial piece for the city to have some activity on it after 20 years. So we appreciate your hopefully yes vote tonight.
Thank you, Tony. For those of you who, who may not have been able to tell where this is based on the map you threw up on the screen. This is that vacant lot north of Safeway Center. Between Auburn Ravine and Safeway. Anyone else wishing to testify on this item? Melanie?
Good evening again, council. Um, I said last week and I'll repeat again today, this is a gateway property into our downtown. The parcel map is last, last, excuse me, lackluster. It has been, it has not aged any well, any different. It's not any better than it was before. It does not honor the historic ravine that is there, that is greenery and beautiful in our city. It will provide uh, nondescript commercial buildings that people will drive by, parking that people will see. Nothing inviting and welcoming into our downtown area. Nothing exciting really for our city in terms of what I've heard. The layout of this parcel map does nothing to benefit a welcoming feeling into our city and it hasn't gotten any better. I too am interested to hear what tenants are secured because there's been names voted around. And none of those names have been anything that is going to bring a boost of economic activity to our city. We're still going to have Lincoln, Rockland, excuse me, Loomis, Rockland and Roseville laughing all the way to the bank. But we put in a grocery outlet center on a gateway property in our city. This should not be approved.
Thank you, Melanie. Anyone else? Anyone online?
No, mayor.
We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Bring it back up here for any final questions or comments.
Well, I just have a comment about my question. I mean, I completely appreciate you pointing out to me that it's got nothing to do with the item at hand, which I understand that. But the reason I ask is because when this came before us before and they made a big deal about who was going to be there. I spent a great deal of time researching all of that and I went and visited different places. And so I'm, I just want to know if we're going to approve the extension. I want to know if they still have some of those, if they've gone away, are they working on other things? And I, I think it's a legitimate question.
Mark, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah.
If you could come to the podium, that'd be great.
Your concerns and we are very fortunate that vast majority of the tenants have continued to show interest. And we are in the process of negotiating with Starbucks, Habit Burger. And Circle K instead of 7-Eleven Grocery Outlet and Goodwill and the largest uh, preschool daycare company, The Learning Experience. And uh, we, we can't promise anything because we don't have executed leases. But we are willing to share with you that we want to bring top notch tenants uh, that will serve the citizens of Lincoln. And that's our desire is to have a shopping center that really serves the needs of the citizens of the city. And uh, we spared no amount of money or effort to design a top notch stone, stucco, beautiful buildings. And we'll be happy to share all that in the design review with you. I'm here to tell you that the shopping center that we're going to build will be second to none to anything in Waller Creek or Pleasanton. Where, you know, we have beautiful shopping centers and we will continue. We almost got 90% of the tenants that we are talking to uh, in some stage of negotiations within the lease. And if the city council will approve it, we'll, we'll, we feel confident that we'll have all those leases executed. But we can't promise you until the lease is executed.
Sure. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure. Sure. Anybody else have any questions? We're very transparent and open about it.
Doesn't look like it.
Thank you.
All right.
I think it might be worthwhile that um, community development.
community development talk about the next steps. This is a tentative parcel map. It just breaks the thing up into nine units. Obviously, nothing else is approved because they ran out of time. So I'd like to show what the next step, not me, but have Mel show what the next steps are, what the public input is and what the what the process is for the rest. So Mel, take it away.
Would you go to this item or the designer view? Because the designer view isn't.
I think he's talking the project as a whole. What are steps moving forward?
Oh, with this time extension, if I may, since this is germane.
Assume the time extension, what's next steps? What is the timeline? What has to happen along the way? What are the opportunities for public input? All of that.
So at the moment, we're focusing on outside of the time extension, of course, is the entitlements for the development, the designer view and the CUP. Currently, the application is being reviewed for completeness. The quality of the submittal. We have comments from the department that's being reviewed currently. We will have a designer view board meeting in about a month or two, depending on the quality of recent middle of in response to the comments that, that, that we provided to the applicants. So designer view will be the next step. And that is an agendized event that happens once a month. So hopefully we can get that scheduled by this month or the following month. So once the designer view considers the application, assuming it gets passed by the design review board for for recommendation for to, to the planning commission. Plan commission then thereafter, the following month or soon thereafter, would consider that both applications at their scheduled hearing. So that can be again in a, in a month or two after the designer view board. Thereafter, of course, you know, depending on the actions by the planning commission, it can be approved or denied. And at that point, it depends on the, on the, on the outcome of that meeting, it can be appealed to your council if it, if it goes to that extent. But it stops at the planning commission, given the level of entitlement unless it's, of course, it's challenged and appealed to your council.
But if I'm not mistaken, the design review is open to the public?
Yes, sir.
The planning commission meetings are open to the public?
Yes, sir.
And, yeah, they're broadcast. Design review meetings are not broadcast.
It's broadcasted. It's we, we do Zoom and we have the meetings and.
Design review is now?
They are. I didn't know that.
When are those scheduled?
Didn't used to be.
It's scheduled on the last Wednesday of each month.
The design review?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, cool. Okay, I just wanted you know, very unusual for a project that's was once approved that lost its timing and goes back to the essentially the same approval process. So I get two shots at. So keeping them.
They got an extension already.
Yeah, well, right, but yes, I did. So anyway, I have no more questions. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Any other questions from council?
I was just, as I'm looking at it, and obviously, so I guess the question I would have is if, for some reason, the council decides not to approve the extension, you know, then what's the, what happens at that point? Do they have to go through a whole new application process or is it, does it have to be come up with a whole new complete design? What's, what does that look like?
Fair question, Sean.
So the way that the process works after map, let's assume the project created and move forward, is it, there's sort of a tree, right? It depends on what's being proposed. So there's the path that Mel talked about as it relates to the CUP and those are for specific kinds of uses that we talked about this last meeting are about. A CUP is something that is a yeah, it's, but the, it's a discretionary approval by the decision-making body. And in this case, it would be the planning commission. And they have to meet very specific findings to obtain that approval. Now, set aside that for a moment for any use that might be in our zoning code requires a CUP. Let's assume it's just a permitted use by right in a commercial area. Then you go into a design review process where they review your mail.
I apologize. I think Ben's question was if this tentative map is not, the extension is not approved tonight, then what?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I misunderstood. If it's not approved, the map is essentially gone and they would have to refile. I would expect that the applicant would refile something substantively similar and would have to go back through the process.
Okay, I kind of thought that's what it was.
Yeah, I mean, it depends on whether or not they redesign the project. That's very expensive, as Tony could probably tell you. But if they were to resubmit generally the same, they would be on the hook for the application cost and, and it's time really, that's the expensive part. Yeah.
I really, I liked what Melanie had to say about this being a gateway property and presenting that to people that come into the whatever is being built there. And I appreciate that it's going to be top-notch type of a whatever's being built. But being a gateway property, having something that maybe is on the corner, going through design, people will have input so that they could say, well, maybe on the corner, but this is what we want to have represent our city as people are coming in, not so much about the buildings themselves.
Except the design review would be about the buildings themselves and not the tenant mix.
Correct. But we're just approving the extension so that that process can continue. Got it.
Anything else?
How many, just out of curiosity, how many members of the planning commission are on the design review?
No, we have one person, Michelle Hutchinson.
Oh, just one?
Yes.
There's two public members.
Go on, back up.
Correct? No, I do. That was. Somebody who disagrees with you, Dan.
Right. There's a planning commission.
Back up.
Nice.
Nita, Nita, your mic, your mic was live.
Sorry about that. My dogs are, want to join the meeting in the worst way. Apologies.
I'm glad somebody recognized the voice.
Yeah, it's planning, a planning commissioner, two public members, the building which we don't have, the, and staff.
Actually, if I may correct you, at the moment.
Might as well. Don't, don't do it like Nita did.
I think in par code, we, that's kind of the roster that we like to have ideally. At the moment, we have a member for the public. We have one commissioner and staff at the moment, but we want to try to make it a full roster and spread it out. But past several years, I believe, since I've gotten here, we only have three folks. But we do notice it, agendize it, we, we do Zoom. You know, we, anyone from the public can attend.
So when we say staff, that's a member of the fire department?
Oh, a planning staff.
Who else?
Michelle Hutchinson ended up with a public, member of the public.
All right. Nobody from engineering, nobody from development?
They, they do participate. They, they're part of the review kind of in the background, but they're not part of the member exactly. But we, our goal is to get that more robustly staffed with a wide variety of expertise. But that's our goal.
And the concept of the committee, as I understand it, is less about sort of like, you know, meat and potatoes, engineering, design. It's more about architectural review and making sure that the style is what we're, so planning kind of is the main clearinghouse for that.
It is. I used to sit on that in between planning commission and this and fire would come in and talk about turn radiuses and, and all sorts of things. We had two, two architects sitting on that, both of which wanted to shift designs dramatically before they got the planning commission so that you could suss that out then. So it would be useful to see if we could flesh that back out. I didn't realize it was so thinly.
Well, right, one, the ordinance, I think, calls for the building official, which we don't have and haven't had for a long time. So maybe we looked, need to look at the ordinance, which is off topic, but
all right.
I'll go ahead.
Motion, sure.
I move we approve the item.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Leslie roll call, please.
Councilmember Carl Skid?
Yes.
Councilmember Andrea?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrenceon?
Yes.
And Mayor Joyner?
Yes. Thank you. We move on to item 9B. Conduct a public hearing and waive first reading and introduce by title-only ordinance 1061B, amending the 12 Bridges Development Agreement relative only to Villages 3, 4A, 4B, 27A and 27B by extending its expiration by six months to allow for time for negotiation of a possible new development agreement or additional amendment and finding that the ordinance is exempt from further environmental review under the California Environmental Qualities Act sequel.
Thank you very much, mayor. I'll be handling this this evening. My partner Christine is, is on a well-deserved week off this weekend. She and I both worked on, we are continuing to work on this extension. So I'm not completely cold on it. I'm generally aware of it. To give you a little background, the original development agreement of the 12 Bridges master plan area was adopted way back in April of 1990. Fast forward to today, that agreement is set to expire on April 14th of, well, next month. And the development agreement did a number of things, but the most important thing from the developer's perspective is that it created a credit for fees paid that the developers have used to on the filing of every single building permit to satisfy their requirements for the fees that they paid to the city. And cities very commonly will set a sunset or expiration of that because the value of the dollars that were paid in 1998 or sometime thereafter are not the same value as they are today in 2023. So it hasn't been a surprise to any of our builders in the area that this expiration has been coming up. And we've been talking about it for a really long time. I will say that in general, development community has really tried to file those permits and use those credits over the past couple of years. You know, as it works for their, for their business model, as we were getting towards the end of this agreement, one of the project proponents raised a legitimate concern to me as it related to the expiration of the development agreement, which is that the projects that generally remain in in that plan area, as you mentioned, are Village 27C, Village 4A, Village 4B, Village 3A and Villages 27A and B. These are all projects that are in and around the area sort of by John Adams and to the east of that that are building currently. One of the, one of the legitimate points that was brought up, at least from my perspective, was that the remaining 841 units, that's how many credited units generally remain, are generally achievable and higher density housing units that include apartments, duplexes and alley-loaded, single-family detached units. These are different housing products that we see in most of our subdivisions that build in and around Lincoln. And in fact, it was a conscious decision by the city many years ago to identify this area as a opportunity to build a different kind of set of, of housing product so that folks have variety, not just one type of housing product. So it's also very, it's a highly desirable type of product for Lincoln because we simply don't get a lot of those types of projects proposed here. As you may recall, a few meetings back, this council approved the first apartment project of which this is, this development agreement is subject to in, I think, 30 years in Lincoln. And so, and one of the things that was brought up and stated at Planning Commission when they considered that project is how important and how much things have changed in the last 15 to 20 years as it relates to these kinds of housing projects. You know, I think one planning commissioner may have said that, you know, one of the concerns that we have is that folks grow up in Lincoln, they go away to college, they graduate college, and then they want to come back and live in Lincoln and they're finding it to be very challenging to, to find a home. And so we really view this as an important step to provide other opportunities for folks to, to live in this community. In addition, I don't need to go into detail on it unless the council would like, but their arena numbers, regional housing needs allocation numbers are a component here. We have responsibility and a requirement to provide a variety of housing types and affordability levels. And so one of the things the developer brought up is that with the expiration of this agreement, it puts those projects in a very precarious financial position in order to be able to provide achievability or affordability. So we feel, at least preliminarily, that we'd like the opportunity for six additional months to negotiate an extension that would be reasonable to both parties to allow for those projects to finish up. We have about 841 left. And after that, this development agreement will go cold and there will be no more need for it after that. So our recommendation is to allow this, which basically just gives us six months and we will be back to you well before that with a proposal for you to consider. Oh, and I'm so sorry. One, one last thing. There is a very important component that Christine added into your report that has to do with the public benefit finding. For those in the audience, th- these are fees that were paid many decades ago. The fiscal impact is that we will carry, as we have been carrying for the last 30 years, a liability of approximately $2.7 million for the following six months and any time that's extended thereafter. And it would not give us the ability to renegotiate fees. So if there's a downside, that would be the downside at this time. Oh, and we think, and I'm so sorry, we think the public benefit is very specifically that we have the opportunity to provide some different kinds of housing here in Lincoln that we don't get from a market perspective very often. So that's.
No, I'm going to wait on you. You good?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, questions from council?
I have one question. When the DA finally expires, the development plan, the GDP for that area does not expire, right?
That's correct.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I was just going to answer a question about some of the housing that's going to go in. We're looking at more of like affordable housing.
We have really kind of a broad diverse set. So we have what we, what is the new term of art that seems to be used these days as achievable housing, which isn't like truly affordable. It's attainable. It's something that is less expensive than you would pay in a standard, single-family subdivision, a different kind of product condo, something like that. But to answer your question directly, yes, there is a, a true affordable housing project that is in the design currently at that look, right in that location.
You're also going to put in some kind of a park in the Bella Breeze area?
Correct. Yep.
All right. Nothing else from the council. I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on this item, please come to the podium.
Phil Hartman with Regis Homes, representing Green SRP, the owner of Village 27C and the master, sort of the interim master developer for all of these higher density houses in 12 Bridges. A couple of correction or additions on the staff report. The ordinance is drafted properly and so is the agreement, but in in on both the staff recommendation and on the ordinance, which was read, it's Village three, four, A, four, B, twenty-seven, A, B, and twenty-seven C. That the ordinance is drafted ordinance is is correct. It's just in the staff report, so.
Got it.
And other than that, I'm just here to answer questions if you have any.
Any questions?
Look like.
Easy peasy.
Yep.
Anyone else wishing to testify on this item? Melanie?
Sean, maybe you can answer this if you have a minute. There are other cities in our state that are currently rejecting or disqualifying the RENA requirements, correct?
Uh, there there are, yeah.
So that is an option for a city to do if leadership so makes the effort.
Yes, I think that we could, it would take quite some time, but there are significant ramifications for that. So while I wouldn't, I'll just put it this way. I would not say that I think it's so much a choice as it is whether or not the community is willing to potentially lock themselves out of grant funding on any level.
But it's it's kind of how someplace like Newport Beach or Huntington Beach stays like it is, right? So it's a way of maintaining their city how they want it to be.
I would say that there are there are communities that are not interested in having any affordable projects in their community, and it, yes, it would be a way to not do that.
There are options. My other, my second question is, we're talking about putting in high density housing right there, kind of the Joyner and twelve bridges area, correct? Is that where this is? That that area is highly impacted with traffic, commute traffic, school traffic, everything. We're talking in, talking about adding high density housing there. What's the traffic plan there or expansion of the roads? Access to sixty-five? What's the thought there?
Gonna cover that, Travis?
There's no additional significant improvements. We're talking on Joyner and Bella Breeze. They're at least not that are triggered by these developments in particular. We've got other PFE impacted items for expansion and Joyner Parkway or some other similar improvements, but that's not a condition of any of the currently entitled projects.
Try to let this get away from us a little bit. Normally, this would be be public comment, and you would simply be testifying. We wouldn't be having this conversation, but as long as apparently we are. The original development agreement, the original master plan for twelve bridges took all of that into account and planned on this being the higher density area within twelve bridges from inception, from the inception.
That wasn't rezoned from the original master plan?
There may have been some minor shuffling around for not much more. And the school site, the park site kind of flipped.
But the total number of homes and units and residents hasn't changed. The complexion has.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing wishing to testify on this matter?
Not on Zoom, no.
All right. I'll close the public hearing, bring it back up here for any last questions or comments.
To your point about the plan, taking all that to account, that was before John Adams went in, right?
Yes, but there was a school site planned for that area. The district gave that up.
Okay. So it's planned for a school to begin with.
Yes.
Because that's pretty hairy over there. Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I might address one one issue. One of the speakers that just brought up about you can ignore arena numbers and, you know, I I will tell you there Huntington Beach has just been sued by the state regarding the arena numbers. And I'm not trying to be flippant. You can ignore them if you'd like, just like, you know, someone can walk into a wall face first if you like. It may not be an ideal thing to do. I guarantee you, if you, the the state is coming after agencies that are ignoring their arena numbers and are not doing anything about it. So I I would, as 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 your, you know, interim city or acting city attorney for the moment, I would suggest not a good idea to do that. It will come with significant financial ramifications.
Financial ramifications and potential loss of land use authority.
No question about it. Now, you will you will lose, you will you will essentially waive all grant funding from the state. There is some commentary, and I will tell you it's just commentary. There is some commentary that that legislators are thinking, well, let's have them waive all state funds, not just grant funding, but but all funding. Not a great place to be.
So so to that, anybody who knows me knows that I would be the first person to tell the state to kick rocks, but in this case, I agree with Mr. Huber and what you said because our our autonomy and our own land use authority and our local control is more important than ignoring that. I mean, I talk all the time about keeping Lincoln, Lincoln, and, you know, be more strategic about the housing and all of that, but it's important that we fight for our local control. And if we just flip the state the bird on the arena numbers, we're asking for a lot of trouble, so.
My memory, the governor actually called out Wheatland in his State of the State address two years ago for not making any attempt to meet the arena. It was that important to him. It's, this is anecdotal, but I will share this. I sit on the boards of CalCOG, the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. We all go to the League of Cities. I can tell you that my experience is that the sense in every one of those is that there are members within the legislature that want us to resist, that want us to fail to meet those those goals so that they can indeed write legislation that will allow them to come in and take that land use authority. And we're seeing it incrementally that this sudden allowable of residential construction on commercially zoned properties is a little bit of a grab back on our land use authority. And so I think they're sneaking this along. And and I would be very, very reticent to not make the efforts because I don't think we'll meet the actual arena numbers. I don't, I'd be amazed if any city in California makes their numbers, but we have to demonstrate a concerted effort to do so. Anyone else?
Arena numbers are not. Turned it off instead of on. Arena numbers are not. We need to get homes in this community that are attainable and affordable. And and, yeah, yeah, that shows that moves our mark a little bit, a little bit closer to our arena numbers. It's far from it, but besides the arena push, we just don't have, I want my granddaughter to be able to live here. And what the rate she's going, anyway. So.
Right. Is that it? All right. I don't think we have anything more from the council, so I'm open to a motion.
I motion that we.
With the amended numbering on the yeah, the corrected numbers.
Hey, I move we adopt ordinance one oh six one B.
A second.
Motion and a second, Leslie.
Okay, great. Councilmember Lawrenceon.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Andriata.
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skid.
Yes.
And Mayor Joyner.
Yes. We move on to general business and, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we did that wrong. And what you actually want to do is pull ten A down below ten B, correct? We did ten C up above ten B. You want Matt's report out to be moved down and Nita's item to be moved out, yes?
Well, it doesn't matter now.
Just so it's clear, we were concerned, our finance director lives up in the foothills and it snows up there, and so she was afraid she was gonna get stuck here, so she had to leave and is going to present via Zoom. But I think we could, if it's okay with council, we could just go with the normal lettering because she's there now.
Yeah, and given how.
I was hearing backup. I assumed she was still in her car.
And given the way she treated me, maybe we gotta move her.
All right, general business, item ten A. Let's just go with our normal alignment. Receive and presentation of the Lincoln Police and Fire Department twenty twenty-two annual reports and allow for questions and or provide feedback to staff. Chief Alves.
Thank you for allowing me this time this evening. It's been a while since we've had a bit of a formal update as to what we've been doing. You used to do this quarterly at our workshops, but you get an annual one now, and hopefully in the future, we can be doing this a little bit more often. So what I'm going to be presenting to you this evening is the twenty twenty-two annual report for the police and fire departments. I'll go over just some general overviews of each department and some general stats, the accomplishments in each department, and the goals we have for twenty twenty-three, and then we'll talk about a topic at the end. So we'll start with the police department. So the mission of our department is to enhance the quality of life for the people we serve by partnering with the community to solve problems and to improve public safety in a manner that's fair, impartial, transparent, and consistent. And our vision is to reduce crime by engaging with our community through exemplary service professionalism, by investing in and developing staff that reflects the diversity and growth of our community. So our current organizational setup, we have me as the public safety chief overseeing the police department. My second in command, Lieutenant Keith Johnson, he oversees all the other divisions and and runs more or less the day to day of the department. We have four patrol patrol teams, night and days, that work twelve hour shifts both sides of the week. And typical staffing is three officers and sergeant, but our minimum staffing is two officers and sergeant. The org chart got a little wonky there, but also reporting to Lieutenant Johnson, we've with our detective units, we have detective sergeant and two full time detectives in that unit. We have two school resource officers who are supervised by the detective sergeant. And we have community services officer, property technician, property and evidence tech. And then we have our dispatch dispatch team. So we have a dispatch supervisor who oversees seven dispatchers and two records clerks positions. And we also have the traffic officer, the reports lieutenant. Some highlights in twenty-two, and I'll explain a little bit of these as we go. So we completed our warehouse expansion project. We are out of room at the police department, so unfortunately, we had to keep throwing money at at our situation and had to build a two story, four room expansion inside the metal warehouse that downstairs, we have the gym, we have property and evidence room, which was the biggest the biggest win in all of this with a walk-in freezer. So everything is properly stored. Two posts, recommendations for evidence processing and storage. Upstairs, we have archived evidence, so there are certain evidence that we just can't get rid of. We need to just keep in perpetuity, and we were out of room for that, so we have plenty of square footage upstairs. And then detectives have a room where they live upstairs in their expansion as well. In twenty-two, we assigned a full time traffic officer to the traffic unit. We haven't had a unit like this since twenty twelve. And he is doing a fantastic job. He has, as you see, a couple below, we've received the CHP cannabis enforcement grant. We received an OTS grant. And he's really working well with with engineering and streets to get things fixed. We get complaints in, a lot of the complaints we hear here. We run them through the system and we have folks that can really speak the language and and walk the walk and and get these things done and give some real good practical feedback. I'll sidebar on that. We did purchase a radar trailer. I think we mentioned it a few meetings ago. We purchased a radar trailer that will collect traffic data, so it will count cars, it'll collect speeds, time of day, day of the week. So that will really help when we do have these chronic issues. We can place that trailer out there and get a really good idea of what of what's going on. We purchased five new patrol vehicles and we updated our armory with some new racking in there. Relocated the detective room, constructed a new training and community room at the PD. So this is the old detective office. So as you go into our lobby, you have the room, the door on your left that used to be detectives. Since we moved them upstairs, that's now a community slash training room. So we have any trainings where outside agencies are invited, they can go into the lobby into a secured side, so they're not in the unsecured part. And also with the community, we have swearing ins or we have briefings for our active shooter training. Individuals can just come right in and and there's no security risk at the PD. We also held the DUI saturation enforcement. First time we've done that in a couple of years. Constructed a new interview room just by shuffling some offices around. We're able to build an inner, a proper interview room with proper equipment to record and capture interviews. We received the fifty thousand dollar OTS grant, relocated property and evidence. With one of the, with the CHP grant, we purchased a truck and held our first DUI checkpoint in over ten years. I think we have the next one coming up here in a few months. And no, no arrests out of them, but very positive feedback from the folks in the line. So they're they're happy to see it out there and we publicize it so everyone knows that it's there and and it's a good reminder for for people out there. And then we also participated in the annual shop with the cop with event, shop with the cop event. A lot of these community events are, you know, COVID put big pause on those, and they are slowly starting to kind of roll back in. So there wasn't a whole lot that we were able to get to this year. But we did do shop with the cops, so we're excited about that. There's some quick stats. Not sure how well you can see them, but I'll run through these real quick. So total incidents at the PD, we handed thirty thousand nine hundred and ten total incidents. Of those, just over nine thousand were officer initiated incidents as traffic stops, that's pedestrian checks. Within that officer initiated, thirty-six, just over thirty-six hundred of those were traffic stops. Crime wise, violent crime, hundred ninety-one reports of that, and that includes homicides, which we had none. Homicides, assault with deadly weapon, rape, robbery, things of that nature. Property crimes, four hundred fifty-nine of those. We logged over sixteen hundred training hours. So all of our staff, we we Lieutenant Johnson does an amazing job getting our people to to training. We have our minimum standards of post requires. Our goal is to far exceed that. We'll meet the minimums because that's just the basic that you need, but what can we do to better prepare people, sending them to again, active shooter, train the trainer type courses and just more advanced type of schools, armor schools and instructor schools. Officers on duty, we have three to four at any given time. We took two thousand six hundred and forty-three reports in twenty-two, a hundred and forty-one collision reports, had eighty-four DUI arrests, two hundred ninety-three felony arrests, and seven hundred and sixty-six misdemeanor arrests. Just a little bit of a trend line here. So as you see, property crimes and crimes against persons were a little bit higher in twenty twenty. We dipped down in twenty-one when everyone was still kind of shut in. Twenty-two things ticked back up. So one year increase in both of those. We don't like seeing that, but that's where we're looking for our trends over the last three years. And now we'll get into the fire department. So the mission of the fire department, the members of Lincoln Fire Department serve the community and the citizens of Lincoln by protecting life, property, and the environment while being courteous, respectful, and safe in the performance of their duties. And their core values are honor, courage, and devotion to duty. In our organization, the fire department, I head the fire department, and I have three battalion chiefs that report to me, and they oversee the crews at Station thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five on their workdays. They do work the forty-eight, ninety-six shift, so they work forty-eight hours straight and ninety-six hours off, but that typically never happens because of vacancies that we've had over the last few years. So just some overtime sprinkled in there. We do have, we we added the the nine firefighters, so we are at three O staffing, so we have three personnel on every piece of apparatus twenty-four hours a day. Highlights of twenty-two, some of the big ones, we promoted a battalion chief and fire captains to fill some vacancies that were there for a long time. We hired nine new firefighters, which was probably the number one grid news of the year. Provided thermal imaging camera for all staff. We ordered a type-three engine, ordered a new command vehicle. Now, we established a fire department liaison for the Lincoln Hills Community Group, and we did resume public education advance and tours at the fire departments post-COVID. So boy scouts, girl scouts, schools want to come and do tours. We're allowing that again. And completed some repairs at Station thirty-three, and we did continue to hold the turkey drive in the center neighborhood visits, which were always popular with the community. Quick stats for fire, handled over four thousand medical emergencies, vehicle accidents, and rescues. Quick stats for fire, handled over four thousand medical emergencies, vehicle accidents and rescues, one hundred and fifty-three structured vehicle or vegetation fires, two hundred and ninety-nine fire alarms, and fifty-seven kind of more random combustible spills, leaks, power lines, down calls. And then seven hundred and eighty-nine public service calls. These are the smoke detectors going off, lift assist, just good intent calls, more community-based and helping folks out type of calls. And these trends are quite obvious. Every year we just keep going up on fire department. Total calls for twenty-two, six thousand two hundred and seventy-nine, four thousand two hundred and ninety-one of those were medical aids. And then breaking it down by station, clearly Station thirty-five is the busiest station, followed by thirty-three and then thirty-four. Everyone knows thirty-five is the one up on up in up in Paul Bridges, Sun City, thirty-four is over on Joyner, and thirty-three is on McBean. Talking about department goals, we'll start with the police department. First goal is going to be to train, and these are a moving target. So this train and certified traffic officer for motorcycle use, we did purchase a motorcycle off of one of the grants that we had. He's been attending some pre-training and has his class in his certification course in April. So he's not going to be happy that I just said that publicly, but no pressure, right? We're gonna, this is more internal, going to be updating our response areas. This is just in our CAD system so we can better analyze crime statistics and be able to get a better view of what's going on in certain neighborhoods. If right now it's a bit labor-intensive, if we really want to focus on, okay, what's all the crime between Safeway and Rayleigh's, it's it's a little clunky the way we have it set up right now. So we just need to clean that up a bit. One, a goal is to construct an outfit, the evidence processing room. This is a dual project with the IT room expansion, which is approved via CIP for this current budget year. So what we'll be doing is the old evidence cage that we had, it's a chain-link cage inside the warehouse, will be converted into a solid room. It's going to be two rooms. One side will be the new IT room, moving it from our mezzanine downstairs where it belongs. And then the other half of it will be an evidence processing area. So we can have a dedicated area for evidence. We're not bringing fentanyl or biohazard into the PD to process where it'll go straight into the warehouse into a dedicated room, where if there ever was a leak or a biohazard issue, you can isolate that room and clean it up without shutting down the whole PD. We'd be working to finalize the police records retention schedule and submit it for approval. That's been on the books for quite some time and needing to get that to council to get that approved. We would like to start a police reserve program and be able to draw from those individuals. That's a really nice thing where you have folks that may not want to commit full-time, but you know, give a day or two a week. And then eventually they say, no, I do want to do this full-time. And then you bring them on. We've hired a lot of officers out of our reserve program who've worked out really well and who are very strong members of our department right now. So we're looking to get that back up and running. Like to be conducting joint trainings with the fire department. Just little random things. We just had some briefing training with fire where we were practicing breaking windows in vehicles with punches. We had a, an incident where we had to deploy our pepperball gun with glass breaker rounds a few months ago and didn't have a whole lot of luck. So we were able to, once fire will get vehicles for extrication training, we said, don't break them yet. Can we smash the windows first? So we're able to go out there and work together with them on that. Most notably will be an active shooter training that we're going to be having with the fire department. It's just going to be Lincoln Police and Fire, John Adams Academy over the summer. So we're going to be having a day or probably two days where both of our departments are going to be able to get together, practice rescues. And my goal is for my police department staff and my fire department staff to know what each other are going to be doing, not learning it on the fly, you know, heaven forbid something really happens, but going into this, knowing each other's roles and responsibilities and knowing how we work together in these events. So we're excited about that. It's going to be, we've never done anything like that joint-wise with our department. So we're happy to see that. Couple other goals, we would love to assign an officer to the special investigation task force for the county. Be researching a facility dog program, facility dogs. I attended a presentation on on these dogs and my eyes were really open to just the value of having a dog. And and there's a big difference between a therapy dog and a facility dog. Facility dogs can be used for taking them to court for a victim who is uncomfortable speaking. They showed us videos and pictures of a dog just laying by a kid's feet who was able to testify because this dog was trained to to be with this kid. And then you can use them for in-depth investigations, to bring a dog out, just something for that person to just kind of relax with. You can have them in interviews in the police department and you have them for for employees. These dogs are trained to recognize stress and and they said, it's amazing, these dogs will come up and just kind of put their head down on you. And then you said, what's wrong with you? Something's going on. These dogs know better than we do. So and what's great about these programs are these, these canines are free. It's about a year-long waiting period, but you get a fifty thousand dog for free through some of these service agencies. So looking into that. Like to establish the full-time pop team. It's a conversation that we'll continue to have. We already applied for another CHP cannabis grant. We're looking at establishing a department, public information officer. I know citywide, we're looking at getting a PIO going. That's the hope, but we would like to have something a little specific for the PD as well. And to just be able to participate more in social media and messaging, just having having someone who's first responder focused. We'd like to establish a formal professional standards unit. So the PSUs are, they exist to ensure the integrity and the conduct of our staff, make sure we're doing the right things. And if something isn't done right, investigating it and recommending corrections for it. We do do professional standards work all the time. Any use of force or complaints, they're all logged in our system and they are vetted. But I just, I, it just feels like I need to be a little more formal with it in our department. And the PSU should actually be on the org chart with somebody assigned to it, even if it's part-time. So just formalizing that whole process and making it more of a daily recurring activity instead of a reactive waiting for the issues to come in. So just try to be ahead of it a little bit. And then establishing a public safety foundation. So a lot of law enforcement and fire agencies have these, or five oh one C threes that are for public safety where they'll solicit donations. And basically they'll be the ones, you have a board and you decide, now the board decides what to buy for the agency this year and just have a, we the impetus of this was, I always have people reaching out to me and say, hey, what do you need? What can we buy you? Which is great, but oftentimes it's, you know, they have money to burn and ready to spend, and I'm not ready to figure out what I want to buy. So if we're working with a public safety foundation between police and fire, then we can kind of have an ongoing rotating list of what our needs are. And then they'll they'll hold the purse strings and be able to distribute those funds to the departments. So we've been working with Nita and she gave the thumbs up on that. We'll be working with Lincoln Community Foundation to get the five oh one C three up and running. So they said, expect about a year for the BOE to get through everything and get everything ironed out. But we're excited to have this, this opportunity come up for us. Looking at fire department goals, so implementation of a policy manual. And we all know our fire department is very old. One thing that we're lacking is a really good comprehensive policy manual. So we're finishing up, removing anything in that manual that's duplicated in city personnel rules. So it's just going through reams and reams of paper and then cleaning it up. So we're hoping in the next few months to have that pulled out. The station alerting system and radio upgrades, this is when the tones go off, the lights go on, the stove gas shuts off, the doors roll up. So it's just the audit, it's sort of a station automation when when the tones go off. The stations have those, but they're very old and they're not serviceable anymore and they work most of the time, but not always. So that's just kind of an expensive project on the horizon. Looking at updating Muni code regarding open burning and fireworks, conduct joint trainings with the police department. Complete a long-term fire department plan, standards of coverage study. We all know about that one. And it's just more community outreach programs, offering CPR courses to the public. Right now, we we, with one of our firefighters that we just hired is CPR instructor. So we're going to be working with, I think they have some dates scheduled with the rec department for the 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 younger rec employees that are going to be working some seasonal work, get them CPR trained, we'll be able to handle all that in-house. But then offer it up to the community and then also get some of our staff certified in car seat inspections and be able to do that again. So that's the big overall annual report. And the last thing I just want to talk about is just employee wellness. This item, I, like I mentioned, I attended the the California Police Chief Association's conference two weeks ago, and I intentionally took a number of seminars on employee wellness. And I'm really happy that we can talk about this in our industry now, because for my whole career, you didn't talk about this. You didn't talk about, are you okay? You didn't talk about, man, that one bothered me. You just bottled that up. And then you wind up being someone who's been in the business like me for twenty-four years, you know, waking up, it's like, why am I feeling like this? What's going on? And then you realize, oh, it's because of all this trauma that I've incurred over these years and didn't offload it in in a healthy way. You know, I'm not ashamed to say that I've received help over the years. It's been very beneficial. I'm very open with my staff about it, you know, just what my main goal is just to reduce the stigma of of wellness, reduce the stigma of therapists, reduce the reduce any of the barricades that get in between an employee and getting the help that they need. You know, I had this moment where I'm thinking that, you know, I submitted my budget and I was happy with it and it looks good. And then a few weeks ago, I'm thinking, I think I screwed that budget up. Because I thought to myself, I said, I put all this money in there to maintain our vehicles, maintain our our firearms, buy new things, but there wasn't a lot of money in there maintaining our people. You know, we spent all this money on maintenance of things, but we spend very little to no money on the maintenance of what's most important, which is our people. So when I get my budget meeting with Nita here in the next few weeks, probably have to sharpen that and move some numbers around. I did budget for some funds. You know, regarding funding, we did receive twenty more, should be receiving anytime, twenty-five thousand dollars from the state. There was a law enforcement wellness thing that was passed where it's fifty million dollars for all law enforcement agencies up and down the state. And depending on your size, you got a certain chunk of money. Or ours was twenty-five thousand. They mailed the check to Lincoln, Nebraska for some reason. Makes perfect sense, but yeah, so we're waiting on the check to get to. So we're waiting on getting that check and been meeting with our peer support team and just trying to figure out, you know, what is it that our staff, and this is law enforcement only, you know, what is it that our staff needs? And we're trying to get this figured out. You know, we're evaluating options, but my initial thought is we're going to be setting aside some of that to be able to send our staff to go see therapists or to send them to a trauma retreat if they need it. You know, we've had staff reach out and take us up on that offer. So I'm very happy that they're reaching out, but there's so much more that we can do. There's so much more we need to do. Just because this this career, both police and fire, it chews you up and it doesn't care. So we need to make sure that we're helping our folks, keeping them maintained, you know, getting them in the shop and and getting them tuned up just so they can be productive employees and be able to retire happy and healthy and and not burn themselves up on the job. So so anyway, so all that's going well with the wellness, a lot of work to do. We don't exactly know what it looks like yet, what what our, what works for the city of Lincoln. But once it's all done, it's going to be unlike anything that we've experienced here in Lincoln, just because we have to. We have missed opportunities with some of our employees over the years that would have changed their trajectory had we been able to step in. And I'm not okay with that. So anyway, not to end on a downer, but that being said, that is my annual report and I welcome any questions, comments, feedback, or direction.
I'm going to guess there's a ton of questions and feedback. First of all, thank you. It's a very thorough, not just report out on what you've been doing, but what your aspirations, plans, and hopes are for both departments. I think that's very useful for all of us to hear. You two have an opportunity. Holly and I are going back to cap to cap. She's on the public safety team. If there is something you need her to drill down on as we lobby Congress, get together and seek help on that before we go. And that wellness program might well be the one to jump on that. I think it's going to get a lot of people's attention. So but on the dog, it sounded a bit like you just want a dog. I know, messing with you. It sounded like a little kid trying to convince their dad.
No, I was just trying.
Well, Sean already said we could get a dog, so.
Yeah, I'm just messing. I know. No, it is rife with complications, but it, you know, you think about it, you have this nice trained dog that's super relaxed around you and you just think about that in your head and you feel better. So the reality of being able to bring something like that, I mean, bring that thing through city hall, bring it to public works and and take it around. The big challenge is having a handler. Yeah, bring it to council.
Council meetings, yeah.
So it's a real thing. It's really interesting.
It is. I've never heard of that. Questions?
Um, so two, two things. When I was mayor, I got two phone calls, people asking me for help and they start talking and I'm like, wait, I'm sorry, where are you calling from? And I got to Lincoln, Nebraska. So I'm like, well, I'm sorry, I'm the mayor of Lincoln, California. They were super confused, so I feel you on that. But the wellness thing, well, first of all, your report was amazing. Thank you. And I also, I'm really encouraged about all of the 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 progress that we are, you are making in your department on catching criminals through the license reader, the cameras. Amazing. I love sharing those stories. But the wellness thing, not only chief of removing the stigma of getting help, but the 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 fear that officers have or firefighters have, if they give any hint that there's a crack that, oh, well, we're going to move you off your post, right? To remove the fear of that, that that means a lot. And I really appreciate your approach to that. Because I'm not sure if every police chief is where you are, right? And I really appreciate that very much. Especially since my own daughter is in the middle of the academy and I want her to have that same opportunity, even though she's not here in California. But I was so appreciative of the work that you guys do and I thank you for your report. It's very thorough.
Yeah, thanks. I was going to say too, and you'll probably hear this from most of us about the wellness thing. Way, way too often is it not a priority because I mean, you you hear about PTSD from soldiers that come back from traumatic events there, whereas fire and police deal with it every day. And if you don't make that a part of the the life of a police officer or a firefighter as to the wellness aspect of it, then we're not, we're doing an extreme disservice. Good friend of mine, who was a CHP officer, had a couple of events happen that he just, he broke down and he couldn't continue. It had to do with, you know, his his kids that were about to start driving and some traffic accidents that he had responded to. Really just messed with is his mind. And so the wellness is huge. I'm glad to hear that you're approaching that.
Great report. Except you should have talked more about the license reader and how good it's been, but you're obviously bringing a holistic level of professionalism that I haven't seen in the department since I've been in Lincoln. You're thinking about things which maybe have more time than previous police chief, but I'm really, really blown away by the, again, the holistic approach. You know, worrying about the evidence and potential safety hazards and wellness thing. So it's a good report. I do have a question. Will his slides be in the in the minutes? Because I couldn't read those numbers.
I know, I'm sorry. We didn't have it attached. We'd love to get your slide deck and if we could put it up online as well.
But keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. One question. Station thirty-four, which is one nearest Sun City, what are most of the calls for? So they had most of the calls.
Yeah, well, every station, most of the calls are medical, medical aid calls. So yeah, so thirty-four is the one over near Joyner, thirty-five. So yeah, so 34 is the one over near Joyner, 35 is the one of. Yeah, the line sure would be medical aids.
Just a couple of quick things, really more curiosity on my part than anything else. First of all, I'm glad to hear that you're considering reviving the reserve program. I think that'll be really useful. I didn't realize it'd been 10 years since we'd done DUI checkpoints. I'm a little stunned by that, actually.
It's been quite some time.
Beware, the seven doesn't exist anymore.
Now, that was under a grant years ago and the grant expired and it just kind of fluttered away. Yeah.
I think it's a really good.
Yeah, the grants are, are, they want the grants to be agency specific. They're not really doing their, their multi-agency grants as far as this type of enforcement goes. Probably the extent we can do is if Rockland is doing a, if Rockland and Lincoln have the same grant, the same OTS grant and Rockland's going to be having a DUI saturation, which is just a bunch of cop cars out looking for drunk drivers, they will allow us to use our funds for their operation. That's about the extent anymore.
So will the SIU be your first special assignment we're putting back in place? We used to participate.
Yes, I'm thinking about my deployment order. I, I think SIU. Any, the next additional officer position we would get would be an SIU position, if I'm not mistaken. It's either the first or the second. I believe it's the first.
And this one is pure curiosity. What, what type of evidence would you have to hold on to in perpetuity?
Homicide evidence mainly, anything from a murder typically you need to keep that just because of all the appeals that, that, that people can do. And depending on what their sentence is.
But that would stay with us? That wouldn't shift to the DA's office?
Days with us. Yeah. So we have things in freezers that are going to be in freezers for the next hundred years. There are certain, there are certain things and times you can get, you can dispose of. But it's a bit of a climb to do that. So often those things just sit there for decades.
Chief, I know that you, you had a DUI night and they, and they got checkpoint, got rescheduled. Do you know when that next, you know, when that is? I thought I wrote it down, but now I can't find it.
I think I've got it on calendar for June.
Yeah, the, the answer, because we did have it scheduled and it was going to be over spring break and.
Oh, June 2nd.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Chief, if it's all right with you, I think we've gone through our questions. Open it up to the public soon. They have anything?
Sure.
Any member of the public wish to? Yeah, come on up.
Hi, hello. My name's Jim Passadori. I live in Lincoln crossings. I was here for another reason, but I'm happy to, I'm a retired fire and I'm healthy and happy. We did in Contra Costa County have a wellness program, so you're on the right track. My question is, is, is the city grows, great to see three person companies, that's very important. But what about. Stations on the fireside and police too, as far as, you know, keeping up with the city growth, possible consolidation. I look at Toronto area out there and see a delayed response. If I'm out in that area and I have a heart attack. The nearest station is on Moore and Joyner and that's got to be a three or four minute response, maybe longer. So I just wonder, I didn't see any of that in the report as far as new stations, consolidation, those things, are those things being considered?
Yep, they're absolutely being considered and we just had our first meeting to. Develop a plan on meeting the LAFCO's condition for the village five annexation. A part of that condition of that MSR, they're accepting of that was we had to do a long-term fire department study. And inside of that will be a standards of coverage study. So what we envision this plan will look like is we will. Develop the RFP and have a consultant assess and design and say, okay, based on your response areas, based on your maximum build out, here's where the stations need to be, here's how many you need, and then that will tell us our standards of coverage. So what we would like to do is have the absolute best case scenario, we have all the money in the world plan and, and what are NFPA standards? And then we would decide from there what it is, is realistic for, for the city of Lincoln. So yes, that plan is in the works. We're, we're starting that. We just started that process last week. And so with, within, I mean, maybe a bit optimistic for this calendar year, but I'm hoping by late this calendar year, that would be completed. So we will have a complete plan. And then we also figured, since we're going to be courting these consultants, we may also include the police department in that too. That probably wouldn't add a whole lot more cost to it if we did a, a long range police department study as well. So yes, that will be handed to us in the near future.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Byron?
Byron Chapman over by the 12 Bridges area, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff. Certainly the turnout that we have this evening, I too, in, in my world, entered the disability world over three decades ago. Life had changed for me in an instant like it does for so many people. I do have the opportunity though, I've been working in volunteering with the disability group for probably going on 12, 14 years now. And to piggyback on what everything has said, and maybe with a little bit more emphasis, excuse me, is the fact that wellness animals. Really are relatively new front. And it's really taking up speed in, 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 it's incredibly, incredibly effective. We have various disabled individuals who have service dogs that most people are familiar with. Assisting the, the blind. We also have service dogs out there that actually turn on lights, turn off lights, pick up keys. They, they're amazing. I think sometimes as this program first started to come around and we started to notice that it, it was a little bit. Apprehensive about really, is that seriously going to work? I, I personally can honestly tell you, I've seen 30 different cases in, in the last 15 years that have been absolutely total successes. In my day, when I was growing up, men, in the most part, you didn't go see a psychologist. If you did that, ooh, or you were, you were a train wreck. Who wants that? And you didn't suck it up. What you did is you went to alcohol, you went to drugs, you had marital problems. It's, it's endless. I myself, when I went through my transition with my family, my, my wife eventually, thank God, eventually said to me, I've done everything I can for us. You need to go see professional help. And I was like fighting that tooth and nail. And it was like, for me to accept that from my personal persona was to say that I was damaged goods. And it's real hard for any individual to come across. Once they crossed over that barrier and realized that the benefit that took care of that, the, the healing process was, it was, it was like a flash. It just moved you forward in ways you couldn't imagine. So having the, the chief looking at that wellness program. I, I think it's, we're, we're light years from, from where we should have started, but the fact that we are there. I'm simply here to tell you from a testimonial, from various avenues and angles that the dog, it's absolutely amazing. It does do its thing and then some. And to allow people to understand that you're not damaged goods, you're a human being. And the type of work that police officers and the fire departments have to go through, it's endless. So whatever avenue that we can give them in order to make that work for that transition is helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Byron. Anyone else?
Good evening again, Chief. Thank you for that presentation. If you want to read a good book about a service dog and what it can do for someone, pick up Jessica and Rescue. It's about a Sacramento woman who experienced loss and service animal helpers. So good book. As we're talking about our city growth, we're going to expand our educational facilities, 17 new schools. Gas stations by schools here, crime increasing. And we're, I've heard, going to provide first responder services to Bigford Ranch. Is Bigford Ranch also going to be included in your assessment of growth needs and service provisions?
Bigford Ranch is in the county proper and it's outside of the city limits. So Placeta County Sheriff will be providing law enforcement services for Bigford Ranch. So we will, and fire, we won't be providing services there. Not to say we wouldn't be called to assist, but 98% of the calls that the county would be handing themselves.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Mayor, we have Fran.
Oh, we do. Okay. Fran?
Hi, Jen. I'd just like to say that I thought that was a great report. Could they put that in the newspaper? And every fire station.
Report for the newspaper. I don't know that we could afford that, but we can put it up online.
Well, could it be, you think the public would want to know, you think the public, the paper might want to do it anyway? And the other thing, every fire station has a dog, you know, that's great. Let's have a dog. And I was impressed with how many grants they've gotten. I mean, you look at all the picture, all the children's books of fire stations and everything, and there's always a dalmatian or a dog. So the other thing is the numbers are going up, our population is going up, you know, our population is going to go up, the other numbers are going to go up too. So I just, I'd like to say, I'm glad I saw that report and I wish it could be made public.
You know, that's a good point, Fran. What might be useful in the future is to do per capita numbers.
Okay.
That we can get a sense of, yes, the numbers are going up, capital, what are they doing?
Sure, so.
Population.
My presentation here tonight was a summary of our both police and fire. I, I learned that our fire department has never put together an annual report, so this is our first annual report. So we will be putting those on our, on our, that'd be mine. We will be putting that on our website, so.
All right. Yep. Thank you. What I didn't see there was anything on the, we used to call them citizens on patrol, the police volunteers. Is that program still in place?
Yes.
Useful and active for you? Is it something?
Yeah, it took a little bit of a hit during the COVID times, but we're starting to build our forces back, yes.
Do you still, oh, you know what? I can watch it from here.
Yeah.
I've been there.
Fran, you need to mute yourself. There you go. Okay. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. You gotta love small towns, right? All right, we'll move on to item 10B, adopt resolution 2023-054. Authorizing the transfer of funds from the 12 Bridges Assessment District Fund 865 to PFE Community Services. Dash Fire Fund 242, authorizing the payoff of the interfund loan between PFE Community Services Fire. Fund 242 and Oak Tree Preservation Fund 290, authorizing the payment of previous year's accrued interest. And a one-time payment principal of the interfund loan between PFE Community Services Fire. Fund 242 and Source Water Connection Fund, Fund 225. And approve the refinance of the remaining interfund loan balance between PFE Community Services Fire. On 242 and Source Water Connection Fund, Fund 225, including an amortization schedule.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to lead Nita in here just because I know she won't. There's some context and, and really just sort of an acknowledgement of some really great work that I think needs to happen before she starts explaining the nitty gritty accounting. This, what you have before you this evening amounts to the very last remaining un. Non-fixed J-LAC finding. And for those at home that don't know what that means, it's the Joint Legislative Audit Committee. And many years ago, the city was, was audited by the state and there were a number of findings that were recommended for approval. And since that time, we have staff over the years has cleaned up the vast majority of those items with the exception of this one, which is one of the most difficult ones from an accounting perspective to, to manage. So one of the things that council told me when I started here, among others, was that this was a high priority to close this matter and fix what's remaining to be fixed. So Nita and I started right around the same time and. It, what it required that we did was essentially re-paper the file to. Figure out exactly how the station was built, find appropriate invoices and basically create a paper trail so that we could figure out a way to transfer the funds to address this finding. And so Nita will go into the detail about that, but. We're from a staff perspective, very proud of this because it's been a sort of nagging issue for the city for a very long time. And we're really looking forward to moving on from that. So Nita, go ahead, take it away.
Thank you. Apologize for not being there in person. You know, that's my preference. However, the weather was conspiring against me and apparently my dogs are as well. Usually they just climb into my lap, but decided, tonight they decided to jump up on my desk and hit the mute button. I don't, I don't think I could get him to do that again if I tried. But as Sean said, that this is the final piece to completing the last finding for the J-LAC audit. When we do our annual reporting this year in October, we'll be able to mark this item as complete. I did tell Sean it's very anticlimactic. There's pretty much, it's almost like a Yelp review where there's a box that allows me to enter up to 1,000 characters, indicating what we've done to make this, this item finalized. But besides that, we are pleased to bring before you this item, this action that has four, or this resolution that has four actions in it. The first is approving the transfer from the 12 Bridges District Assessment Fund to the PFE Fire Fund. The second is approving the payoff of an interfund loan between PFE Fire and Oak Tree. The third is approving a payoff of previous year's accrued, or a payment of previous year's accrued interest and one-time payment of principal between. PFE Community Services for Fire and Source Water Connections. And then the last is the refinance of the remaining interfund loan. So just briefly. The, the bond or the 12 Bridges development resulted in the. The formation of an assessment district and that district had many things that were allowable to be, to be built within that district. The bonds funded those things and one of those was fire protection. What we found in looking through the past history of the bond is that the bond proceeds were received and that the approved facilities were constructed. However, in the past, the city staff didn't record those expenses for construction of the approved facilities within the correct fund. Instead, they were recorded in another fund. So what we are doing tonight is simply paying back the fund. That, that bore the brunt of the expenses and making that fund whole for those expenses. And that in turn will allow that fund PFE Fire to manage some of its outstanding obligations, two of which are interfund loans. And so we will then ask you to approve the payoff of one of the interfund loans and the significant pay down of the other interfund loan. And just again, in brief, that is what this item is doing. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have for me this evening.
Nita, you just took something incredibly important to this city and downplayed it about as well as anybody I've ever come across. This is, as a council member, you generally come in with a list of things you hope to address in your time on the council. This has been on my list for 14 years and we've been pounding on staff, making attempts at it. Nita and her team and Sean have gotten this done and gotten it done in short order. And I, I personally can't begin to tell you how grateful I am to be able to check that one off the list and really proud of the team that got this done. Thank you for that.
We appreciate that.
Any questions from council?
No questions, just to reiterate, Mayor Joyner, as a council member who came in just as the audit was coming out. That was, it was a lot, right? It was a lot. And. I think I said this in the newspaper article when we shifted positions here, they were asking us questions about. The coming year and I said, when this happens, well, because we, we had pretty much taken care of everything except for this one item. That we can finally shut the door on that and move forward and never have to look back again. And we don't have to keep justifying ourselves. We don't have to keep, you know, rehashing the past because it's going to be done. And I'm super grateful, this particular one, Nita, I know, like you said, create a paper trail, that's a lot of work. It's a lot of work and it's a lot of tedium and attention to detail. And I just have to tell you that I'm so grateful. And I just have to tell you that I'm so grateful because I can sleep at night and to know that we have staff that we can trust, that tells us the truth, that is doing the work behind the scenes. And it will, it feels really good right now, and it's gonna feel really good in a few minutes to finally get this behind us and, and be done with it. And I'm really, really proud of Lincoln, and I'm really proud of our staff, and I'm proud of the council for the work that we've all done. So thank you, thank you so much.
Ben?
I was just gonna say that I agree with Holly because there's so much that, as a council, we rely on staff for. And to be able to, to close this part of the history is extremely a huge, huge deal. And, and we rely completely on staff to be able to help us make the right decisions as, as you've give us feedback so that we can make decisions that help Lincoln and the community move forward. Thanks.
This has been, right? So high on my list, actually longer than 14 years, for everybody's benefit. First of all, it's nice to have an accounting department that can account. Second of all, this was an exercise in investigation more than numbers. The stack of bond documents, there are legal documents. The stack that I saw was about, in the end, probably three and a half to four feet. They had to be gone through and with a fine toucan to make sure that what we were doing is what the bonds were intended to do. Then try to find out why they didn't get where they should be. And then trying to find out what were the actual transactions that happened. This has taken a long time, but it's a huge amount of drudgery. It's a huge amount of investigation. And it comes down to four simple checks. Not even checks, just entries in a general ledger, but it has, Holly said, this absolutely closes the door on I guess I'm gonna say the period of bad administration of the city of Lincoln. Bad or incompetent, or badly incompetent. No, they were good at being incompetent. So, anyway, thank you, Nita. And I know that without Sean's leadership, it would have been harder for you to do the job, so. Thank you.
Yeah, definitely. It's a group, group effort, for sure.
Congratulations to Nita and Sean for getting this done.
All right, with that, I'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to comment? Byron?
Once again, Byron Chapman, mayor, council members, city staff that was listening at home, as well as here tonight. I, I too, kind of like, when I came into town, this was starting to come to the forefront. A couple of things, and the reason they bring this up, maybe only to make sure that we, that this subject, this issue is really put to rest. I, I believe that, and it's more than just the, the dollars and the accountability. It truly helps us, the public, have more trust and, and understanding how the city's run and what staff is doing, how the council is, is making those decisions. And, and I'll read this, just so that people, maybe from a historical standpoint, how this literally got so, so far out of whack. One section in the, in the report simply states that the, the PFE Community Service Fires Fund 242 had an interfund loan from Water Sources Connection Fund 225 with a current balance of $5,408,000. The internet phone agreement states payments shall be made when funds are available. You, you, you don't pull funds out of the air. Even if you do your own home budgeting, you can't go, well, yeah, we're gonna buy that new house. We'll figure out how we're gonna get it paid. And, and having the accountability and backend where it should be, I think is a, is a hurdle that I think the city did well in. And I'm, I'm hoping at this point in time that not only does it close the door on that, but having the city, having California to come in and look at our books, look at our city, hopefully this will put the end to that. It has been a lot of work. And it does help me and others, I think, to understand that, that trust of what's going on and what you're looking at and the information you're getting from staff is valid. It's what it should be. And when you vote on it, that's the direction we go. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Byron. Anyone else? Anyone online?
No.
Okay. I will open this up to a motion. Scott, we can do this all in one, can't we? Anyone wish to make a motion?
Yeah, I move adoption of Resolution 2023-054.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, Leslie, roll call, please. Do we have a motion in a second, or?
Oh, Andrea, Andrea, a motion.
Councilmember Andrea, Andrea Otto?
Yes.
And who was second?
Uh, Lawrence. Lawrence. Okay, councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skid?
Uh, yeah. Yes.
He raised his hand.
I didn't raise my hand, I didn't say yes.
Those are yes. The mayor's the yes as well.
Dan, I was waiting for your yes.
Thank you all for this. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nita.
So I need to emphasize this again. This is massive for this community. And to finally have this behind us and to have, as councilmember Andrea said, be able to sleep at night, to know that the folks that work in this building are doing incredibly good work on behalf of the citizens, giving good information, accurate information to us to be able to make decisions has made this job more enjoyable. For a while there, it was not fun. To be able to put something like this behind us and move on is a really, really big deal. So I'm, I'm so pleased to be able to get this done tonight.
I just, I would add that we're not done. You know, there, there, as we continue to improve and we'll bring other things forward as we find things that need to be cleaned up. And I just, I want to give a shout out to our budget manager, Ruth Ann Codina. She was a huge help in compiling the information and gathering, gathering the information needed in order to be able to complete this.
Yeah, Ruth Ann has been stellar through all of this. So thank you for calling her out as well. With that, we'll move on to item 10C, Adopt Resolution 2023-055. One, augmenting $350,000 from an unencumbered balance from Fund 711 to Lincoln Boulevard Phase 3, CIP 354. Two, augmenting $350,000 from the unencumbered balance from Fund 223 to Lincoln Boulevard Phase 3, CIP 354. Three, authorizing the city engineer to approve an additional $500,000 in change orders for a total authorization not to exceed $804,000 for the construction of the Lincoln Boulevard Phase 3 improvements project. And four, authorizing the augmentation of $200,000 from the unencumbered balance of Fund 223 to purchase, to the purchase order with Raftel, with Railpros, sorry, Field Service, Inc. And five, authorizing the augmentation $45,000 from the unencumbered balance from Fund 223 to the purchase order with Kinder Morgan, SFPPLP, Travis.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you mentioned, we've got four requested actions for budget augmentations and a fifth one for additional contingency. Before I go into details on each one of those, I want to provide a general description of the project, some of the challenges that have been faced, that we've faced, and then also a little ray of sunshine with the outlook moving forward. So this project, CIP 354, the Lincoln Boulevard Phase 3 project, was really at grade improvements of First Street and Fifth Street. This includes pedestrian improvements that we don't currently have pedestrian connections from one side of the railroad tracks to the other. Improvements of the roadway and the underlying utilities. The pedestrian improvements, obviously, for safety, they've got crossing arms. Huge upgrades versus traditionally, people right now just walk along the tracks, walk along the road in an unsafe manner. The utility upgrades are replacement of waterline and sewer lines. This waterline is 94 years old out there. It was obviously predated me a little bit. So it's gonna be replacement of waterline, replacement of some sewer infrastructure and some underground signal interconnects for the railroad. When you're working in UPRRs right away, we can't just trench across the railroad. So a lot of these lines, the signal interconnects, water line, sewer line, these were gonna be accomplished by means of what we call jack and bore. And for anyone that's unfamiliar with that process, what it is, is we dig a really big hole on one side of the railroad tracks, dig a really big hole on the other side of the railroad tracks, and we force a pipe between one hole to the other using an auger to sort of pull the material out, and that forms a casing that then we can run our new utility lines through. That's a general description of the project. It came in at bid of roughly $2 million, and we had a $300,000 contingency. Upon award of construction, we immediately started running into some challenges. The first two were with Kinder Morgan, who has a high-pressure gas line that runs in UPRRs right away, and then UPRR themselves. To talk about each one of those individually, so Kinder Morgan, during the project development, we had submitted what we call these utility letters. That's a very clear description. Here's the work that we're gonna be performing. Do you guys have any conflicts with your facilities?
Union Pacific is commenting, is we-
Yep, Union Pacific, they're getting their last blow in. So they responded back, no conflicts. When we started construction, the contractor reached out. They were doing their sort of call 811, their utility locates. And Kinder Morgan came back with a requirement to enter into a, an encroachment permit with them. We'll get back to that. It ends up getting very expensive and a very long time to get through this process. That was going on in parallel with UPRR. We had already entered into a public highway at-grade crossing agreement with them, where again, it was very clearly described what the scope of the project was. We entered into agreement. It dictated who, what the improvements would be, the cost of the flagging, sort of the interaction between the city and UPRR. When we then went to construction, they said, oh, yeah, not only do you need this agreement, but you need one more agreement as well for the, for the electrical work. Between Kinder Morgan and UPRR, that process took roughly a year to iron out those two permits. And during that year, the economy was facing some pretty hyperinflation. Per the contract, if it's an owner-caused delay, the contractors allowed to get compensation for the costs incurred during that delay. That came to approximately $200,000, or about 66% of the original contingency. At this point, we haven't really done anything. We've, we've maybe potholed some utilities, but no work is accomplished. So we get out there, we pothole the utilities. We find a number of unknown utilities. Along with, we discover that the existing sewer line out there in these areas is not what was identified in the CCTV, but instead it's a, a concrete-in-case sewer line. Our original plan of sort of blowing through that sewer line and using the existing alignment was no longer going to be feasible with the, with the construction activities that were bid. As such, we were somewhat forced to delete all the sewer upgrades from this project just because the, the jack and bore and those rehab methods aren't feasible when you've got a concrete-in-case sewer line. We get that settled. We've got some elevation differences. We've got to work around Kinder Morgan. We dig our first really big hole, and this is where probably you guys start getting to where we, we closed First Street. We've got a very big hole on one side. That's insertion pit on the Lincoln Boulevard side, and then a receiving pit on the far side. We start our jack and bore for that water line, or for the, to replace that 92-year-old water line. We're doing a very large casing to put in a new 14-inch line. We get down First Street, we get under the railroad, we get almost to the finish line, and we start getting deflection. During that time, we had encountered that 92-year-old water line had broke, saturated the soil, it needed some emergency repairs. It delayed the project a couple more months to get all the permissions and stuff like that. But the biggest impact is that it deflected that, that jack and bore casing. It was no longer gonna be feasible for us to run our water line through. We weren't gonna hit the, the targets. We weren't gonna make everything land where it needs to land. As such, UPRR directed us to abandon that line in place. So we've now done this $350,000, $400,000 operation once. They directed us to abandon that in place and to dig a new insertion pit adjacent to it that wasn't gonna be as close to this broken water line and saturated soil and some of these lenses that resulted in the deflection, and to redo that whole operation. That obviously is a very big expense. That's a majority of what we're gonna be talking about tonight. We did dig the new insertion hole. We did the jack and bore. We successfully got that water line replaced. That's going a lot better now. During that, we were also able to do the jack and bore for the interconnects and accomplish a lot of bid item work. We subsequently went down to Fifth Street. We did the, it was a pretty minor item just for the signal interconnect down there at Fifth Street. At this point, all of the underground work is pretty much accomplished. We've got the new water line in, we've deleted the sewer line, we've done the two signal interconnects. A lot of that, sort of, anytime you're digging 20-foot wide, 20-foot deep holes in a 100-year-old part of town, you're gonna encounter these, these challenges. We certainly did on this project. Those change orders, again, represent almost $800,000 between the delay in the second insertion pit, the work that was required to satisfy UPRR's requirements in it. Looking forward, however, really what we have left is the topside work. We've got the pedestrian, the concrete, the the crossing arms, some of those safety improvements, and we also have the roadway reconstruct. This is where the next very large portion of my request comes in. We've got it listed here at an estimated almost $310,000. And that's reconstruction of First Street over top of where that six-inch water line broke. Unfortunately, what we discovered when we, when we went to pothole that area, when we did the water line replacement, is that that six-inch water line was really just, the roadway section there was a couple inches of asphalt on top of dirt. Well, you get a six-inch water line that has a very high volume of, of water flowing out of it when it breaks. It saturated everything. That's no longer really a, a substantive, a substantial subgrade that we can just pave over. As such, this 300 or so thousand additional would be to rebuild the structural section, dig out all that soupy clay, rebuild the structural section on First Street. If we get this authorization, and if, with each one of these, and again, I'll run through them individually, but with this approval, and if weather cooperates, we're probably talking about six weeks of work left. The, tentatively, the contractor's schedule shows paving in the middle of April. Then we've got some electrical upgrades, some striping, stuff like that, taking us to first part of May. Obviously, this weather is not that conducive, but moving forward, we don't anticipate any other unforeseen conditions, hopefully. And it really is a, a short duration of work remaining. So to go into a little more detail, each one of the requests and why it is, because a portion of this is rebalancing funds. The original project was funded partially by federal funds, which was a CMAC, a congestion mitigation, federal funds, and then some money from our water fund, our sewer fund, and it will now be from our street funds. We had a very small budget from our streets funds before. Federal funds are not eligible for underground work. So when we had all these change orders for the new jack and bore, for the water line, for the broken water line, none of that is gonna be eligible for CMAC. We've got to rebalance that a little bit. This roadway work needs to come out of streets, so we need to pull additional streets in. What we're not doing here, and one, for anyone that was sort of adding up the numbers, we're adding a lot more to it than we need, and that's really to offset, we're not relinquishing the sewer funds, but we don't anticipate- And that's really to offset, we're not relinquishing the sewer funds, but we don't anticipate utilizing the sewer funds that are already in here, as we're not doing that sewer work. So going through the resolution one at a time, the first one is augmenting three-hundred-and-fifty thousand from the unencumbered balance of three, or seven-ten, seven-eleven, I apologize, to this project. That's coming from the water fund. Again, this is to backstop those, the second jack and bore operation, the waterline break, those repairs that we incurred on First Street. Augmenting three-hundred-and-fifty thousand from the unencumbered balance of Fund Two Twenty-three, Lincoln Boulevard, to the project. This is now pulling in street funds. This is to backstop that new repair that we're going to have, the structural section upgrades on First Street that were compromised from the waterline break. Third one, authorize the city engineer to approve an additional five-hundred-thousand change orders. That's really, a lot of these change order, the underground work is complete, but the stuff moving forward that hasn't been authorized, we're waiting for this approval. And then we could move forward, give direction to the contractor. Number four, authorize the augmentation two-hundred-thousand from the unencumbered balance of two-twenty-three streets money to the purchase order with RailPros. So one thing that I haven't talked about much was RailPros. They are UPRR's consultant or contractor that performs the flagging services. Not only did this project suffer a number of delays, which obviously we had an original three-hundred-and... Three-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand-dollar contract with RailPros to perform the flagging, if everything went right. Unfortunately, it didn't go right. We incurred delays, but we also had some challenges. The methodology with which they assign their flaggers is somewhat difficult to work around on the capital side. It's to the point where over the Thanksgiving weekend, our contractor was obviously taking time off. And they gave us two options. We can either take our flaggers off when you're not working. And then you'll get back in the queue, you've got to suspend your project for the next six to whatever, eight weeks. Or you can pay our, pay our flaggers when no work's being performed, the contractor's not there to reserve that sort of line in the queue. That type of thing happened, whether it was a sick day from their staff, if it's a rain day for holidays. That, that process occurred over and over again. That's resulting in us going from a three-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand-dollar contract to almost a six-hundred-thousand-dollar contract for UPRR to provide flagging for, I mean, safe construction of the facilities within their right-of-way. The last one is authorizing an augmentation of forty-five thousand from the unencumbered balance of Fund Two Twenty-three Streets Funds to the purchase order with Kinder Morgan. Again, I've touched on a little bit, we ended up having an encroachment permit with them, we've had a, a lot of redesigns, we've had them out there. Anytime we're working in the vicinity of this high-pressure gas main, we need to have them on-site. Because we did everything twice, we had them on-site a lot more than, than was anticipated, especially as we didn't anticipate anything, as they responded back originally, that there was no conflict with their utilities. So with that, I'm sure there would be some questions, I'd love to provide additional clarification. I know some of these change orders I just painted with a very broad stroke, but if you'd like to get into the details, let me know.
Andy, you want to start us off?
The, a hundred, a hundred K of the original two-hundred... And in one through three... Was, from what I understood, primarily due to... The Kinder gas people and the railroad people saying they had no problem with our plans. And as far as they were concerned, it was a go. Then it took a year to complete what they required, and you had no notice of that.
That's correct.
Next time we do something with the railroad, we'll know that, right?
We've got Ferrari coming, it's in the queue.
The... The fact that the sewer pipe... Was asbestos. Were the asbestos from city documents, from contractor documents, or there were no?
There were no nineteen-twenty-nine asbestos, but we did do our due diligence and we opened manholes, we videoed the lines. We did our best to identify what the existing sewer was, what its condition was, and based our rehabilitation on that. However, we didn't do physical potholing because of the location of this, which honestly wouldn't be that typical. When you've got access to the inside of the utility, it's not very common that you would also pothole the exterior, but that's where we would have identified the concrete encasement.
And that's from a... From a specific question, you know, I don't... Have no problem with what decisions you've made. Or, what's, I have problems with what happened, but this stuff isn't in our control. What I, I'm, this is a philosophical thing. And I really... Wouldn't like for this to happen to a council again. There had to be some points in the process where, not that, not from a micromanagement standpoint, but there had to be a point in time... Oh, that you guessed that we were going to deep yogurt. You know, and that, some sort of a, a process that, that... Maybe it's when Sean does his end of meeting briefing, he says, hey, you know, we're having problems with whatever project it is. And it looks like, you know, we're blowing the contingency on down. That, 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 just... In business, when I was on a board and this kind of thing had happened, you know, there'd be hell to pay.
Well...
Not the, not the dollars, it's, yeah, surprise.
Well, so... I think that what we probably will recommend move, well, I will recommend moving forward is, you know, I, I think I'd send a couple of emails over the course of this project, just sort of giving a generalized heads-up that things aren't going so well. But that doesn't really do much for everybody else, members of the public, right? And so there's no reason that we, this isn't something that we're necessarily ashamed of, these things happen in projects, it's an unusual situation. But the reason why we put together the report you saw tonight was that we wanted to highlight how dynamic, you know, a project like this can be. Because if you think about it, Travis has the responsibility in real time to be making decisions about how we move forward with a project when you have a waterline that's bursting. That is a service line that provides service to homes, and that affects other things, which then affect other things. And as we had tracked the project, I think the idea was, in many projects that Travis works on, there's ways that he can manage it to minimize cost and pick up other work on the other end. And we sort of hoped that that was where we were going to end up. But I think that perhaps on, well, really any projects, but we'll stick to ones that have, you know, significant financial impacts. If we see things kind of going on the skids, I'll just add it to my city manager report. And, you know, I'm going to give you some fairly poor news in just a few minutes anyway, so I'll just add it to it.
Yeah, because, you know, the, you did keep us up to date on the status, but the status was traffic and the traffic impacts. You know, it just, we're running under these problems, and the people are going to be upset, so be aware.
And, and I think a good line of communication between the two of you as well, I, I think what happened, at least with me, in our one-on-ones, I, you know, I'd gotten a dozen calls the week before going, what the hell's going on with First Street? I still can't get down it, I live right here. I'd come to you, you'd answer as best you could, but then say, let's check in with Travis. And so there was that delay in getting information to the council, I think.
You know, the other thing that we could do, it would be kind of a neat business sort of update, that some cities do this very regularly, is Travis and I were talking that when Inside Lincoln was a thing, one of the regular things was sort of CIP updates that were written. And they keep logs of all of that anyway, so it's not like it's a ton of additional work. So we could either do something like that, or we could, you know, on a maybe quarterly basis, because we have lots of projects going on, we could just publish some sort of informational item on consent. And if someone liked to pull it and talk about it and kind of detail, or we pull it and want to highlight something that's not going well, we could do that too. It wouldn't really be that much extra work on our end. So maybe what we'll just play around with the concepts and then you could tell us what you like.
Yeah, yeah. If it's, if it doesn't cost staff time and it's semi-automatic, they used to have on the, on the website, CIP status. It was never up to date. You know, you look in the column was three years ago. So that's, if you, if you're going to do that, it needs to be accurate.
Yep, agreed.
I shouldn't have to tell you that, you know.
But I agree anyway.
Bill? We'll open it up to the public comment, anyone wishing to speak on this matter?
Publish a CIP update. I think you could just post, you know, current road closures on the web, on the website.
You'd want to know the why, though.
Well, but you, you know, whatever it is, that's fine, but, but I think that would have taken some heat off of you. I think that's all people want to know is like, what's going on and when's it going to be fixed?
I think you're largely right. Anyone else? None here, anyone online?
No.
Nita, you comfortable with this?
Yeah, Travis and I have spent a lot of time talking over the transfers and the money that's coming from the various funds. So yes, the finance has approved and vetted these transfers. Nobody would be more glad than, than we will than Travis and I when this project is complete.
All right, thank you. With that, I'll go ahead and accept the motion.
I'll move, we adopt resolution twenty-twenty-three dash zero-five-five concerning this project.
Second.
I have a motion, Carlson, second, Andriata.
Okay, great, Councilmember Carlson?
Yes.
Councilmember Andriata?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrenceon?
Yes.
And Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
When Sean and I were at the women's club today, that he was talking about the stoplight going in Oak Tree Lane and talking to Fran about, you know, it's going to cost like a million dollars. And like, everything's a million dollars, everything's a million dollars. And so when I looked over at him, look at this, I go, everything's a million dollars, so, yeah.
There will come a time when we'll say, can you bring it in under a million dollars? All right, we move on to the Workshop, Park and Recreation Committee priorities.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So at the last city council meeting during a council initiative business, the council briefly discussed the ongoing community discussion of the dis golf proposal within the Auburn Ravine area. And council discussed whether or not there was a consensus at that moment to set aside the proposal at the time. In part related to some of the feedback and also related to the reality, which I'm going to highlight here in a moment, of that we have many, many other projects we're working on currently. And so one of the things that I'm responsible for is making sure that we're prioritizing the work that's the most important to the council and community. And those other types of projects that are not even close to being ready to, to bring forward. We're only spending time and resources on those when they're prioritized, because we could go down really deep rabbit holes. And, and sometimes that does happen. So what we just, what the council discussed at the, at the end of the last meeting was, well, perhaps the best way to have this discussion is to talk more broadly about Recreation Commission and the projects that they're involved in currently and the efforts. And if council would like, provide direct feedback on what should be prioritized, deprioritized, deleted, et cetera, et cetera. So before we get to that, and I do have a, a list, which is included in the packet, I wanted to read a, a section of our Muni code that talks about the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. I'm going to read it verbatim, so I think it's really important that the community understand that this committee is full of volunteers that dedicate some portion of their time for the following purpose. The, the committee shall be an advisory body to the city council on policy issues affecting the city's park and recreation programs, including, but not limited to, facility expansion, creation of new programs, reduction or change in program capacity, and marketing of park facilities and programs. The committee's objective in advising the council shall be the provision of public recreational leisure facilities and services by maintaining the city's existing park and recreation programs and developing new programs based on public demand and the city's financial capacity to serve the community's leisure and recreational needs. So in my opinion, the committee has reasonably carried forth a variety of advisory items from this, from that body up to the city council over the years. And again, I've only been here a year, but in my experience, the meetings are generally consistently attended by committee members, staff, and depending on the topic of discussion, community members. Typically, the process for new concepts or not currently planned improvements would be that an idea is presented to staff or directly to the committee. Then after considering such proposal, the committee might say, go look into it, staff, or tell us more about X, Y, or Z. And so it's our job to go do that work. And also help them form ideas that are brought up. So some of the time it's ideas that the commission, committee members themselves have, other times it's folks from the public that show up that think an idea is really neat. And to be really clear, because I think this has been misinterpreted a number of times, it is, in my opinion, not staff's responsibility, or, or would it even be appropriate for us to say absolutely not to any idea that the commission wants us, or committee would like us to look into. It's our job to say, you know, hey, we want to start a, you know, elephant petting zoo in, in Joyner Park.
Absolutely not.
Yeah. You know, it sounds absurd, but you know, honestly, if they really, really felt strongly about it, we would have to go do a little bit of work to figure out, you know, what that looks like. That's our job, is to provide professional resources. So we, in this particular instance, if a project is unique or new for Lincoln in some way, conceptual direction is sought as a standalone item. And when, and when we feel that sufficient due diligence has been completed, we bring it forward just for a city council to consider. A great example of this is, is pickleball at McBean. Issue's been raised, people have asked about it for a really long time now in Lincoln. We, someone brought up the concept of the location and that it might be a neat idea, talked about it at Recreation Committee, they loved it. That project was very easy because we had a location that was already improved and, and it was fairly inexpensive effort. And so you bring it forward, council considered and eventually approved it. So that's kind of how it works. What I want to show you now though, is, Leslie, can we pull up my little chart? Is, I had Doug, who is our recreation supervisor, put together all of the projects that are either funded or that we're working on currently with the committee. And when you see it, you'll notice that there's an off, oh no. Can you zoom, is there a way to zoom in a little bit, Leslie, I don't know if it'll... I assure you that there's, there are actual projects up there somehow. So while they're working on that here, I'll just read off, I'll read off the, the first, oh, perfect, okay. So the first, let's see, fifteen projects that have the X marked in the second column, those are funded projects. So they have crossed a threshold from being an idea that we're all thinking about, exploring into something that we're actually pumping active resources into. So anything from the community center reservations, we have Foscat has received a grant from PBD for, PVT for bleacher shade. Infield laser grading. infield laser grading, uh, we're doing a renovation of a soccer field at Foscat. We have the McBean Park Bandstand Project, which has been a long time coming, uh, post and cable projects at Foscat. Uh, we are in the midst of replacing, um, and adding turf to Bierman Plaza. You have some basic things for McBean Pavilion there. Additional shade at Joiner Park, pickleball courts, Phase Three of Jimenez, uh, which is a hugely expensive undertaking and requires a lot of community input. And then, of course, Brentford, Brentford Circle, uh, and that says slash Henry Root Park. I will just note to everybody that doesn't know what that is. The naming committee many, many years ago suggested that Henry Root Park be the name of the park moving forward. I, this was many years ago, uh, if the council chooses to change that, that'd be in more than in your authority. But that is what we have on the books. And, um, and then as you see below that, you have the disc golf proposal that has been brought up at Rec Committee, the Community Center, uh, Park Phase One, this is the skate park, we've discussed this quite, uh, quite a, a number of times at, at council. There are BMX proposals, uh, that we're, we've explored, and they've been presented to Rec Committee. Parking, uh, the big one on number nineteen, this has not been discussed at council level, but this is something we're talking about in the budget process about whether or not the city should have a parks, and Recreation Master Plan, which is a fairly common document now in most cities that thinks about, um, our park system a little bit more globally. And then, uh, Gary's gone, but, uh, the, we added in here that it's been brought up that there's a, um, proposal for indoor practice for, uh, baseball and softball. So here's, this is the list, you can imagine that each one of these requires multiple different departments working together. So you have Travis's group that are involved in the construction of things. You frequently have community development when it has anything to do with a new park build or already kind of planning matter. You have, uh, our, our Recreation Department, you have, uh, our Public Works Department working on many of these, because they're facilities that we maintain. And so, uh, once something goes, even if it's something as simple as a post and cable project at Foscat, that requires multiple departments and literally probably at least a dozen, if not more, people to work to make sure that those are all completed. So we don't, um, when I had been asked questions about, you know, how far along and where, where are we at in engineering and design on, you know, the much discussed disc golf, uh, project, the answer was nowhere because of the thirteen or fifteen projects that were in, in advance of that. And, uh, we, we had no dedicated funding source, this is discussion that had occurred after budget and has not come up during mid-year, and, and if there was ever gonna be a discussion about it, it would have to be during future budget cycles. But I put this all up here just to show that, that clearly the Rec, uh, uh, Commission and, and our staff have a lot that they're working on all at one time. And so it is always helpful to us and not offensive at all if council would like to reprioritize or change that in any way. And, uh, so, um, that's sort of my report, I'm happy to talk about anything. I, I, I understand that there's a possibility this comes really about just one issue, but I agendized it so you gave you a lot of authority to move things around if you'd like to see things changed. And it would, we will communicate whatever your direction is back to the Rec Commission, and they'll continue to do the good work they do.
All right, um, so the first thing I want to get out of the way, right off the bat, the, the Parks and Rec Committee has historically been really our highest functioning committee. Really proud of the work they do, their annual reports back to us have been stellar, and they're much appreciated. I appreciate that you're setting this up so that we can have a conversation that is broad-ranging. I guess I'll hold my own personal thoughts, and I don't have to, I'll jump in. So I think the way you've laid this out is incredibly useful. I think a lot of folks simply don't know the process that we go through, and we kind of have a one-off here that, that worked a lot of folks up, and it didn't help that some comments were made that were picked up by the newspaper and, and shoved out way prematurely to, to any actual action being taken. But I personally would not shift anything around here. You would. All right, we'll jump in. What would you shift? No, 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 no. My misstatements? Let's go with it.
Well, can I just ask a quick question? Why is disc golf number thirteen underneath fourteen and fifteen? Why is that? And is that just a numbering mistake, or?
I'm so sorry, it's not in order of priority. The numbers are not in order of priority.
No, I know that, but I mean, just going down the numbers, you have nine, ten, eleven, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, thirteen, sixteen.
Oh, uh, because, as I said, I wanted to make sure that the projects that are refunded were grouped together at the top. And I think when we put the original list together, I moved down one. So, sorry, this, it's not quite sequential. No. And we haven't, to be honest with you, we haven't really operated that way. It's sort of been catch, as catch, can, and try to get as much done as we can.
I think the idea of Parks Master Plan is long overdue. Sure, and that's a conversation that I think we should all be involved in. Be very, very useful. I'll just jump in on this one with respect to the, uh, potential for an indoor facility at Flightline Drive. You already know my concern there, and it's, it's what I need to get out of the way to even be able to begin to have that conversation. There is an airport overflight zone right over the top of that building. And as a result of that, the density and intensity of use within that building is very, very controlled. Um, I sit on the, the, uh, Placer County Airport Land Use Commission, and this is something that they are very definitely gonna have to take a look at, see if it's even allowable before we move forward with that. I'm, I'm not opposed to the discussion in any way. What I do have, I'm gonna show my age, in the back of my mind, is the Farrell's Ice Cream Parlor that had the Sabre Jet crash into it and burn children to death back in the seventies. That is stuck in my brain forever. I do not want to create a situation where we even come close to the possibility of a similar incident. So if we drill down on that, if that's something we want to explore, we need to move that out of the way first before I can feel comfortable having that conversation.
Makes sense. Well, to your point, we need to make sure we're, we're actually allowed to do that before we, I mean.
So we've looked at it in the past, there have been people that have wanted to take some of the warehouses, indoor volleyball, one gentleman wanted to do in, indoor golf carts, and the density and intensity issue of the overflight zone has always nixed it. So, so I'm not just kind of coming out of nowhere on this. And that, in the past, as we've looked at potential uses in those areas, even farther away than this building is from the flight line, the answer came back no.
I think the need for, for some kind of an indoor facility is much greater than some of the others that, that are on there. So even if, if that's not the place that, that it goes because of those concerns, having something for the purposes of indoor practices or indoor events for sporting things, I think is.
I don't think we own anything else. That would, we don't own anything that's like those buildings. That's the problem. It's just, that's the location, right? We don't own anything. Well, I, you know, I'm sure it's not gonna be any surprise to anybody that I actually really think that under the ones that are already being done and already in progress, I, I would really like for us to start talking about the skate park in more concrete terms. Because, um, even before the disc golf, uh, which I, I like the disc golf idea regardless of where we put it, I like the idea. I think it's, um, a growing sport, and there's a lot of desire for it. But the, with the skate park, and I, and I realize we have to talk about funding and all that, like, I'm not being naive. But I, I think when we look at the situation and how that whole thing unfolded, and just the drama that it created and the angst with our youth and our skaters, and, and I really appreciate the efforts that have gone into the, um, temporary one out there, the kids are using it, I think it's great. But I, I really just have this vision for this state-of-the-art skate park by the community center. And, and, uh, I, it's my wish and desire that we put that as one of our priorities to start talking about, start looking at plans, and start brainstorming how we could actually fund that. So that's, I think that the kids in this, and, and they're not all kids, young adults. I think that the young people in our town really deserve to have a place dedicated for that. And I'd like to see that happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You have a bunch of it for this year.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I know that, I saw that, yeah. I'm sure I've been talking about possible ways, but it's kind of always been like, oh, Holly's talking about a skate park again, right? Like, I want it to be known that this is actually a priority that we're gonna start working on. Yeah, no, I saw that on there, yeah.
Well, right.
Yeah.
The, I sure thought we had a master park and rec master plan years ago. Which identified what kind of fields and what kind of, uh, activities should be in grouped, in what parks, but not identifying the park, but just saying, when you do a park, you ought to do this of one type of park.
Yeah.
And, and so that would be, you know, I, I agree with that we need one, and that would be the starting point. I, a, a lot, when you a lot of, a lot of park and rec stuff is not prioritized. It's, it's as the funding is available. You know, are we, so it's only the exploratory things that are outside of normal, uh, community parks that we're really talking about in all cases, right? BMX, disc golf, and of, of some indoor facility. Those are either conceptual or, uh, exploratory. And I don't know whether those things in that category need to be prioritized or not. Well, from a, from a, they do have to be from a staff standpoint.
Yeah, I, I, I understand what you're saying. I, I guess like the point of this exercise is that, let's take the disc golf proposal, for example. It's something that people have been very concerned about and have raised, you know, a number of legitimate concerns about. And one of the frustrations that I suspect you'll hear from them, I'm trying to speak for them, is that, um, we haven't been able to have any robust conversation about it because all we have is some ideas and conceptual thoughts about it. And this, it came from a few meetings, and then once it became, uh, something that the, uh, local neighborhood really wanted to focus on, I have spoken to many of them on the phone and emailed with a lot of them over a long period of time. And part of the frustration that I feel is, it, it simply wasn't a priority from a staff perspective to move, uh, to do a bunch of, uh, additional design and engineering and potentially even environmental work on that project because of the fourteen projects you see above it that we're doing right now. And so, to some degree, this is driven by the fact that, you know, periodically you'll get proposals that either from, from a, a support or, or not support perspective, somebody wants to have moved a little more quickly. And, you know, we don't, uh, sometimes we can't operate that way. We, we need to get done what we have on the books. And so I, this was sort of just an opportunity for, for, uh, this council to, if you wanted to clear the deck of a couple that you don't feel are something you want us to look into at this time, then, um, we can refocus our efforts on the things that we already are moving forward on. But, or you keep it on there, and when we get around to it, we'll have community meetings and we get around to it.
Well, I really think with the disc golf thing, it's, it is something that, that, uh, could be very inexpensive to, to put together. Um, so we shouldn't spend a ton of time on it, but I, I don't think that it should be, uh, I should think, I think you should take the Auburn Ravine Park completely off of that. I, I believe it should say disc golf, exploring, uh, uh, locations to put that in. I, I don't believe that the Auburn Ravine is the right place for that. I think there's but, uh, but it is something that is, um, a lot of people are doing. And, I mean, there's a ton of, it, I mean, wherever we end up deciding to put it, I don't think it's that expensive to, to do so, any fundraising for these locations to be put in would be pretty minimal. But, um, I think you should take Atro Ravine Park out of that title.
I think that makes three of us that think that way at this point, hopefully more. I, I think we are all supportive of a disc golf course somewhere in town. I think that the easiest way to do this is in areas of new development, so that you are not encroaching upon existing residential areas or commercial zones, any of that. So as we plan, uh, these new areas, I think that's the opportunity to really take a good look at that.
Yeah, uh, I, I agree with you on the disc golf, I mean, it's a legitimate sport. It'd be nice to have it someplace, but probably not Auburn Ravine, considering the opposition. Also, the indoor practice facility, it'd be nice if we could find someplace to actually put that. Because, um, I was just talking to the people, softball people, and it's, it's really hard to practice now because the fields are just soaked and you just can't go there. So, well, you know, it sounds like there's at least three members of consensus. If, if that ends up being the direction, that's, this is extremely valuable because we're able to go back to Rec Committee and say, like, we have sort of tested the waters on a few different things, and we've heard the following, you know, prioritize this, we would like, we, we love the idea of disc golf. We are not interested in the, the Auburn Ravine location, we'd like to seek out some areas that maybe are undeveloped currently or other alternatives, so that they can then have that discussion. Because, you know, uh, what would be, and I just, I'll say this one last time, what would have been very unethical, in my opinion, is, is for staff to nick something that hasn't been allowed, been allowed to go through the public process, that's not appropriate.
Well, and I'll just say about the Auburn Ravine, I, I've said the whole time that I wasn't convinced that's where it should be. What I said was, I wanted more information about, and I've asked for alternative places. And so, so I, I, I will agree that I'm fine with that. If you want to take it off of there and just leave disc golf on there, take off the Auburn Ravine, I'm totally fine with that. Because I, for one, don't want to do damage to, um, to a nature preserve or, or whatever, I'm, I'm, I'm totally fine with that. I do want to say, though, with all due respect, with all due respect to those of you who have protested and have given us your opinions about that, the reason that I'm, that I'm agreeing to take the Auburn Ravine off is because of the nature and, and the, and the, and the, uh, the atmosphere there, right? Like, because we don't want to harm, uh, harm the nature and, and, and the area. Not because you paid thirty thousand dollars extra to the developer for your view. Okay, you don't own that view, it's public land. And I don't mean to be disrespectful, but you don't own that view. You did not pay that money to the city, you paid it to the developer who probably shouldn't have told you that nothing would be there. And disc golf course is not development, it's not building, okay? So my reason for agreeing to this is because I do care about nature, I do care about the preserve. But you don't own that land, that's public land. So let's just be clear about that. But I'm, I'm in agreement, we can take that off and, and just move forward with other ideas for disco.
So Sean, as we look at, one of the issues here with these bigger projects is obviously funding. And we're constantly looking for funding sources. With, uh, Gemini's Park, to get those two ballfields built, we continue to circle back around and look at, uh, PVT as a potential partner in that. I don't know that we've done that recently. Have we moved that up, the priority request?
Sure.
With them?
For the ballfields, for sure.
I, I think it's absolutely essential that we get that done.
Yeah. Let me ask a question. I, I, I know that a lot of these parks are already like designed, but what's the, what I heard was from the softball, baseball people recently is, we need more fields, we need more fields, which we do. But then I hear from the soccer side that they're yelling the same thing. Where are we in, is the need for baseball and softball more than the need for soccer? Where are we in that?
I, I think that if you ask Doug, I, I think that if you ask Doug Brown, who, who deals with these folks every day, he would tell you that, that the answer is both, maybe even an equal measure. The fact, it's a good problem to have. You happen to have an active community that really wants to get out and participate in sports. The problem that we have is that the pace at which that's occurred, we, we haven't been able to keep up with appropriate facilities. And actually, parks are kind of one of those things where you don't want to have more than you need because then you're wasting resources that people aren't using. You want to have just enough, right? There are projects in Village One, potentially Village Five, not potentially, Village Five. And maybe, I don't think Sudby, do you know if Sudby has a park planned in there, Travis? Can't remember off the top of my head. But there, there are at least two very large regional park proposals in both of those projects that are designed specifically to include pretty much, you know, one of them's a soccer complex concept. And, and the other is, is something similar, but for baseball. So that someone did think of it, think it through during the Village One and, and Five and even Seven designs. The, the big lesson learned that we're getting a little weeds now is the city's policy on whether or not we end up being the folks that build the park or whether it's something that we require to be a developer obligation. And there's pluses and minuses to each strategy. We've learned that one of the frustrations that I talk with some of the community members about is the problem with the city taking the responsibility for building the park is that we have to collect funds over a really long period of time before we finally get enough in the kitty to build what you, what you'd like. And so we find ourselves in positions like with Bella Breeze Park, with, with Brentford Circle Park, with Jimenez, where we're way behind the, you know, Jimenez is part of Lincoln Crossings, which has been done for quite some time and it's still not.
So, so all three of those fell into an unfortunate circle of events. Lincoln Crossing came on. Tony's going to be able to jump in on this more than I am. Certain amount of money was decided upon. It would be needed to build all the parks in Lincoln Crossing. And then the building boom takes place and the cost of building anything skyrockets. And that council at that time took a look at the funding they had and had to make a decision. Do we build every park that's planned to a certain level, but not fully? Or do we build as many as we can, full flesh, fully fleshed out? And then see where we can go from there. And that was the decision they made. The end result of that has been for the last, well, two thousand and eight came the recession, everything stalled for about a decade. There was no funding for anything. And now we're, we're scrambling to, to look for funding sources. With Nathan Dubin Park, which is in Lincoln Crossing, about three point four million dollars above and beyond anything that had been paid in by Lincoln Crossing to build. The same is going to be true largely of Rettford. And obviously, Gemini's is a regional park that we're, we're struggling with because that has some really big facilities within that. So, and, and so that was the decision we made facing that was, you know what? Once we figure out how to pay for these, that kind of got left behind, everything else should be built by the developers moving forward. And, and I'm fine with revisiting that conversation if you want to, but it's what makes sense so that we don't get stuck in this position again of the city collecting funds as costs of construction skyrocket and the two numbers don't match up.
I agree with the exception, you can't do that with regional parks. Regional parks require fundings outside the development. So, we're always going to have that problem with regional parks. But I thought our policy was that all community parks and all neighborhood parks were done by the developer. And we didn't charge them in lieu, they couldn't do an in lieu.
It's a really good point about the delineation between small parks, local parks and, and regional. Because obviously, regional parks are for, for everyone in Lincoln.
Region.
Yeah, maybe not so much for the neighborhood. But, you know, part of the problem, also, if you want to kind of compound all of it, is that regular updates and refreshes to our fee structure is another component that matters. I mean, one of the things that, that we're going through right now, as we're trying to adopt this second and third phases of our fee update is that we have to try to capture that, those dollars in fees. And so that's this delicate dance and balancing act with the development community to make sure that they're paying a fair amount and not getting overcharged, at least in their opinion, for that. So, you know, a lot of this comes down to keeping our documents up to speed. A lot of, you know, some of the stuff we talked about earlier, as it relates to the fire station, similar problem, really. You run into a funding crunch and you steal, you steal, excuse me, you borrow from other funds. And it's important to make sure that you, you have your fee programs in place and appropriate. But I, it is something, it's a broader discussion than I think that needs to happen.
One of the benefits of having a developer build the parks is they're not paying prevailing wage, the same way. They've got, they've got guys out there already doing the work.
So, back, go ahead.
Back on the problem. You, you, we have things in this status. In progress, design, exploratory, master plan and conceptual. I would think that things that are conceptual are things that don't require staff time. I think that's, at that stage, is a presentation for some proponent. And it goes on the list, unless it's totally obvious that guy's crazy. It goes on the list of conceptual, not having any need right now to spend any staff time on it.
You're probably mostly right. It, it sort of depends on the project. I hate saying it depends. That's more of a lawyer thing to say, right? It's, it's, it's my first time working with him, I was insulting him at the first meeting. So, okay. It kind of just depends. It depends on the proposal. Like, you know, some things are simple and others are complex. And some things you think are simple to begin with and then end up becoming complex. And, and that's why this is, it's, you know, again, a dynamic situation depending on what comes to us. And what we really don't want to do, this is staff's recommendation on one thing that we want to make clear is we don't want to set up a situation with our, our commissions on any level where we're not encouraging them to be creative and be open to concepts and ideas. Now, what I've told everybody is, I can't, I probably have worked on more projects in the public sector that never happened than happened. It's just a matter of the business. And, but it's that process of having an open place to go and talk about something interesting that I think, you know, we want to support. And it's okay to get back to them as the council and say, hey, look, we think these ideas are great, but these ones, we're not interested at this time.
Well, I think that something else that we, that we probably should consider in some of these projects is, and everyone worries a lot about the funding, which we ought to because the money has to come from somewhere. But one of the things that Gary's saying is, hey, why don't you just give me the keys and I'll take care of all the funding? I mean, I'm not saying that we should do that with the building. But my point is that there's other people that want to put some time and effort into creating funding sources to, I don't know, maybe, maybe they create a funding, build a building to have an indoor thing. And, and I'm, I think we ought to, yeah, absolutely. So, I know we say funding restraints and developer fees and all this kind of the things, but I don't want to crush anybody else's dream and or need of indoor stuff just because the city wants to try to, we have to try to figure out how to pay for it, when with the Fourth of July Fund and things like that, that's completely community driven. And that's, well, not completely, but anyway, mostly, but that's the, that's the kind of thing I'm talking about. Let's have the, those that are so passionate about it to say, look, this is where we're at. We, we want to support you in anything we can do. This is, this is all we got, but we think it's important and, and we'll support any funding options that you feel are going to work for us to do that.
Get what you need out of this ish?
Uh, yes.
I'm just looking at the clock, the hours getting late.
Yeah.
Open it up to the public real quick if anyone has something they'd like to say on this item.
Normally, I never come to meetings. I mean, it's just not something I do. First of all, I want to thank the city manager for his review. Having worked in a public agency, I'm aware of, of trying to balance the city council's varied sorts of requests that aren't formal. And not actually really being able to do something and still have to do something. So anyway, the one thing that has come out of this for all of us, and that's because of this problem, is that we've discovered the nature preserve, that the city actually has a nature preserve. And there's a number of things we'd like to have happen with that nature preserve in talking with some of the plant societies. In our discussions, there are currently state funds available to enhance the nature preserve. And so we'd like the council to pursue that. The other thing we really would like the council is to vote on keeping it as a nature preserve and not putting a sports venue there. We are still waiting for that. Thank you. Oh, by the way, I want to thank the council member, Andrea, because I absolutely agree with you that the fact that someone decided to buy a house somewhere is not all our problem. This is about the wildlife habitat. This is about, there was, by the way, a pair of bald eagles. When was the last time anybody saw a pair of bald eagles in any urban area?
That's cool, three weeks ago.
Yeah, it was, yeah. And that's in the city of Lincoln. So this is really an incredible. Yeah, yeah, it, it is really cool. But anyway, thank you very much. We, we're still waiting to hear counsel.
What you just heard was consensus to inform the rec committee that the council is not interested in placing disc golf in the nature preserve.
Does the city manager understand that?
I think he does.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Evening again. I know this topic about an indoor sports facility is kind of being tossed around and supported by the softball and little league associations here. But if we don't pursue this, this will be a missed opportunity for our city. The county is going to build an indoor sports facility on Sunset. There's indoor sports facilities in, at the Roseville Fairgrounds. If we don't build something here, we are going to have a missed opportunity. And something like a sports facility will bring young families local and out of the area. It will drive up economic spending here in our area. Let's not miss this opportunity. And Mayor Joyner, I question why you're concerned about children and, and flight patterns out of the hanger when there's homes being approved right up next to the airport. But I just would encourage the city not to miss this opportunity to build an indoor sports facility. Thank you.
Homes are not being approved in the over, approved in the overflight zone?
Mayor, can I make one more thing? One thing I forgot to mention is that I, I was talking to Sean about the possibility and maybe we can put it on the list to talk about later. But I spent some time at McBean Park with Mr. Chapman a few weeks ago, talking about the accessibility for the middle section. And the idea is simply just to get a lift that's similar to the one at the theater, the civic auditorium, and place it strategically so people can just be lifted up to that, that first row and not all the way up to that first row in the middle section. And so, talking to Sean, he said that's probably something we could do for relatively inexpensive with not a lot of work. And so I just wanted to mention that to the council and have them maybe put it on the list and so we can talk about it later. Because I think if, if it's really that simple a fix, then we should probably go ahead and, and, and consider that. And, and just get that taken care of. And then that way, McBean is completely accessible.
Yeah, and we'll look into the best path to take care of that. But what I would just say is that we, we use not only an internal staff member, but, but external folks that do that type of work for, that's what they do forty hours a week. And so we just would want to consult with maybe a couple of additionals to make sure that we're, if we're going to have a holistic approach to it, that it's the correct one. And so, but exactly what Holly said, it's, it's something that I think that we can figure out a way to work in to a budget.
So Sean, I ask because I don't know. And, and when we first started talking about the need for ball fields for girls softball, we turned to the school district. We no longer have joint use relationships with the school district. But I, I don't know, are the school districts' playing fields accessible to the public when not in use by the district themselves? If not, why not? Because that would double the capacity within the city, oh, for sure.
I, I really don't want to step on the school district's toes. I'm just going to tell you what I've heard. So, take it with a grain of salt. The, I think that the answer is that, yes, they are available for use. But what I've heard from the folks that run those programs, the expense compared to renting a city facility is significantly greater for, for the rental fees. And so many of them don't do it because they can't make a pencil. And that's simply what I've heard from groups. I haven't talked to Carrie about it or, or anybody from Western Plaza.
I did have a brief conversation when the topic of the junior rhino football team starting, because the, the junior zebras have all the fields. And the, the problem they were running into was that the fields are really expensive. So I talked to Carrie, she talked to her staff person. And I think the disconnect here is that if you are a nonprofit, you get a cheaper rate. But they were viewing the football teams as for-profit because they take money in at the gate, not realizing that all that money goes strictly towards the conditioning of the helmets and all that, like football's very expensive. So I think the conversation needs to be had with them, and I'm happy to do that. But it's recognizing that these sports teams are either through the city or they're nonprofit. They're not making money on it. And then I think the school district might be more amenable to rent them cheaper.
When is the next two by two?
We haven't had it scheduled, but we, we, we need to, yeah. Because I can circle back around with, with Carrie on that. Because I'm glad you mentioned that because I wasn't thinking it when we were sharing time, but that's actually very true. That would really open up a lot of, of space for our teams. Here we are, yes. So we'll get that scheduled and we'll talk about it.
Scott is a former school board member. If you have any thoughts about how we can write that up.
So, what I'm, what I'm telling you is not specific to Western Plaza because I was not on that particular school board. Typically speaking, joint use agreements that are formal with the cities typically are out of favor. And the reason why is because usually one is, one is going to control it far more than the other. And so that's why these use agreements are much, much more favorable. Where, where a group can come to a school district and say, we need it for these particular days, for these times. And then schedules can be worked out accordingly. Joint use agreements typically will come in and say, you're going to have it half the time, we'll have it half the time. We're going to share fifty fifty, and it's never fifty fifty. And then when it comes time to replace a synthetic field or not so hypothetically, completely renovate a, a very large Olympic sized pool, then suddenly people are saying, well, wait a minute, in the last twenty years, you've used it eighty percent of the time, we used it twenty. Why are you asking us for fifty percent of the cost? And so that's why joint use agreements aren't really, they're not really in favor anymore. They, they've fallen out of favor. But rental agreements or specific use agreements for a season, for a term, for finite use, those can be had typically very easily, and I would bet my left arm, although I am right-handed. I suspect that they already have a, a fee for use already established at the district, including denominations of for-profit, nonprofit and, and the like. So, so this is a concept they've already thought of. They probably already have their own. They probably already have their own schedules plugged in. And, and anything that needs to be worked out if, if, you know, Pee-wee football or if the, you know, the, the softball league or the little league goes to them to say, we'd like to use your fields. They can probably tell you immediately when they're available. And, and more importantly, when they're not available. The only rub that comes into that usually is when a team will make the playoffs. If a, if a high school team or a junior high team, when, when they make the playoffs, then suddenly they need the fields for a longer period of time than anticipated. And they usually will not plug in the playoffs thinking, hey, if we need to, then we'll work on it then. Because the reverse of that, if they block it out during the playoffs and then they don't make the playoffs, then nobody uses it. So, but general thoughts, not trying to, you know, to tell you how Western Plaster does it, but that's very likely how they do it.
I think you're right. And I, I think that in, I can't say, but I don't think it might be not as difficult as we're expecting. Because they've already kind of agreed for the junior rhinos to use it for less money than what they originally. Like before, it was like $200 an hour, $200 a day. It was just outrageous. There's no way they could afford to do that. But I think they've agreed to really lessen that quite a bit. So I think if we have an honest conversation, we might be able to get somewhere.
The other thing I'll mention to you is, and, and I know this doesn't necessarily help with the weather. Outdoor use is much cheaper than indoor use. Because they have to have staff there to open up and, and turn on lights and then turn off lights and clean up and lock up and all of that. To the extent that this, that the city can partner with the school district and say, well, can, can our staff be authorized? We'll provide the staff. You might get a better rate also. Again, that's well outside of my expertise with Western Plaster because I'm, but, but you may be able, you may be able to partner with them and say, can we even get a better rate if we provide the staff for this, for this community group? And, and then you drop that down even further because they're looking to recover their costs. So.
If everybody's all right, we'll go ahead and move on to city managers' reports.
If you have a public comment.
I wanted to say something.
Go ahead Fran, real quick.
Well, this hasn't been said, that's why I want to say it. First of all, thank you for letting us be part of the discussion. I, I don't live in Lincoln Hills, so I go exercise in Rockland. I go to Shalito Pool in Rockland. And I was over at the Rockland Community Center and I noticed the disc golf. I didn't even know what it was. And the way they do it over there is there's a small room about the size of a closet with the door open outside. The disc golf is right outside the community building there. And it's like a concession. The guy, he can rent you the disc and he has other things in there too. You know, he sells little game things to the kids. I mean, it's not much bigger than a closet. But they have, and it's open so many hours and they have the time out there on the door. And I just think maybe if someone was interested, they could go over and see how Rockland does it. It's at that third street, I think it's called Johnson Park, you know, the main one. So I just wanted to contribute that because nobody had mentioned that as a possibility. Just having it right next there with a, with a concessioner right there who rents out the desk even. Okay, thank you.
I think that's a private business.
I just wanted to say, thank you all of you very much. I appreciate you listening to all our concerns about the nature preserve. And we love the nature preserve. We want to see it used the way it's meant to be used for everyone. Holly, I, I agree. We love it and we appreciate your time, everyone for your time and your service. And thank you, Mr. Scully. Thank you.
Anyone else before we move on? Being none. So correct me if I'm wrong, both Roseville and Rockland have like a half cent sales tax for parks specifically. It helps them augment parks and rec.
I can't speak to that. I don't, I don't know. I'll, I'll find out though.
All right. We'll move on to city managers' report. Only good news.
So sorry about that. This will not be good news. But it's news nonetheless. So there, we are in the process and have been in the process and this is super important to every resident in Lincoln. Who are maybe getting ready to leave. If you pay.
Bad news, they're out of here.
Yeah, if you, the city of Lincoln has not adjusted utility rates for water, sewer and garbage for approximately 10 years. What that has done, and I'm going to speak just broadly, but this is, Nita and I have done some work to, to run some models to, to sort of verify this. If we don't cure that issue this summer, hopefully sooner. The, the water fund will be bankrupt before the end of the first half of the next budget year. So by that would be, that would mean May, June of next year. And by bankrupt, I mean there will be no fund balance remaining for operations. We will, we will be unable to meet our obligations. The same holds true generally for sewer. And the same holds true generally, although a little bit further out for garbage. Garbage, we may be able to stretch it 18 months. But when I'm, I made a little light of it when I started, but to be very clear, it is incredibly serious situation. And if we do not have a positive experience interacting with the community on what these rate changes need to look like. We will have to make some really difficult service decisions. And so I, I'm, I'm, this is something that we've been working on for a number of months and we feel very confident now in our numbers. And so I'm going to be talking about it any chance I get, you know, I'm going to go into 7-Eleven and get some coffee later and I probably will tell that guy. So, because I just think that it's, it's important to have a realistic discussion with the community about our means. And, and we can't ask them to pay more for services if they're not fully read in on our challenges. So we're going to have a lot more to share on that. We're going to be reams of information for everybody to review. And we're, you'll start to see, one of the contracts that was approved on consent this evening is outreach for water, sewer and garbage rates. And you'll start to see that within the next 45 days or so. So that's my primary update tonight and could give you more, but feel like, I don't know if anybody wants to stay much longer. Yeah.
Thank you, Sean. Council initiated business?
I have some. Whether we agendize it or workshop it, I spoke a little bit with Sean about an idea that I had when it comes to a public comments that are not a part of any agendized item on, for, for each night. There's a lot of times that a lot of the public will have comments about the, the light going in at Deer Creek or, or Dry Creek or. Oh, thank you. See, I already forgot. But my point is I, I think that there ought to be a way on our website that we can put a forum up that, where we can post concerns that people have about stop signs or things that, that are actionable and updatable that we can have a place so that people don't kind of have to keep coming back two or three months. I've said this for four or five different times and da, da, da. But if we have an interact, and I call it interactive, a forum based thing where we can take, someone can take the comments that were, that were put, have, have a page for comments for anyone to build it instead of having to go through and watch the video. Can interact or, or see what, what has been said, whether it's a comment on this or that or the other. But other, more specifically concerned about the items that sometimes get forgot. That are concerned to a few people that if there was a page where we can, they can go to. And Sean can say, hey, check on this. This is what we found out. This is where we're at on that. And maybe it's not resolved yet, but then that person maybe can then on the same forum say, great, maybe you misunderstood what I was trying to say. Here's a little bit more of what I wanted to say. And a little bit interactive form to where things don't get forgot. Cause from meeting to meeting, there's so much that can happen that it's, unless you're constantly going back and reviewing other meetings. And I don't always have enough time to do all that. But, so that was my, my point is if we can find either time to workshop that, see if that's something that the council would like to have them do. Or maybe council or figure out a way to build that together.
It's, okay. We no longer have a public information officer and I don't know that we have bad with Sean too. It's a conversation worth having. Do we throw it on strategic?
Yeah, I think maybe we have strategic, why do I keep forgetting, planning, apologies. Strategic planning, that's a good one to discuss, but many of the things that he's, that Councilmember Brown is talking about, I think are cured by a person that is dedicated to public outreach. Because we all sort of sub in to that role, everybody that's sitting here tonight, certainly. And while that is appropriate, I think that it's nice to have a clearinghouse. Because I think Councilmember Brown's comment is so many times we get the same questions about the same things. And if there was a clearinghouse where someone could go get that information, maybe there was a way to do it. And there probably are innovative ideas that other communities have instituted along that line that we can look into. So I'll, I'll do a little research in advance of strategic planning on that.
Anything else? Phil?
Has some information on it.
Let's wrap up council initiative business first. Oh, go ahead.
Okay, just want to let everyone know that the Titan Site Remediation Committee is continuing. We continue to do our research. We have some meetings set up. And we are getting cooperation from elected officials. So things are moving along.
Very good. Anything else? No? Yeah. Hour is late, we stand adjourned. Thank you all.
Please staff.
Council, thank you for letting me be here. Appreciate it.